All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. And Amanda, can you do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Councilmember Cortez?
Here.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Here.
Councilmember Ring?
Here.
Councilmember Nysley?
Here.
Mayor Youngblood?
Here.
At this time, I'm going to ask, does anybody want to move to adopt the agenda?
I move.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye. I mean, I know of one, but I'm just going to ask, is there any other recognitions or proclamations other than the one that we have for the, do you want me to just say it extra mile?
Madam Mayor, that one's actually on the consent calendar.
So I don't have to even read it. Okay, so we don't have any other ones other than that? None? We're good? Okay, let's move on. So matters of interest to council members. Anybody got any?
I just want to remind everybody about the League of Voters, Women Voters Candidate Night on Thursday at 6:00 PM. I believe they're going to have some kind of a live coverage, but I'm not, I don't know for sure.
And where is it?
You can come here, right here.
Okay.
I just have one quick thing. I just wanted to thank all of our community leaders and our Sheriff's Department and our DA and everybody that was involved in the Safety Day. I was really sad to miss all of that entire week. There were so many things that went on from our State of the Town to our Safety Day, but I was having, getting to be with my daughter who was having our eighth grandbaby. So, but I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who was involved, who came out and who worked hard to make all of those events successful.
Okay. I'd like to say thank you to that as well. It was very well received. I was amazed by how many people in the community came out and experienced the helicopter coming at 11:30 sharp and for getting that helicopter there. I know that they had a search and rescue and thank you for taking the time to get it there. Also, thank you for everybody coming and I also want to make a point of thanking everybody who was responsible for getting the State of the Town together. I was nervous at times because you know, when you've got the momentum going and you're preparing your speech and you're getting speakers in and things like that and the fact that, you know, we had people at the last minute who couldn't speak. It still went over amazingly and thank you for everybody who is supportive, so I didn't completely flop. We were a team and we all worked together and thank you Jenny for being the logistics chair and everybody who came and watched it and yeah, it was good. So those are my, just, I just wanted to thank you for both of those as well. And from that standpoint, if nobody else has anything else to say, we can move to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As always, my report is in the Council agenda packet. Glad to answer any questions at the end of this, but I just want to highlight a couple things that's in the report. On the Finance Director Recruitment, I'm pleased to state that we were actually successful. We hired an individual, Ted Williams. He started on September 30th. He did have a pre-scheduled vacation from the October 7th through the 15th. That's why he's not here tonight. He did review the audit and stuff that we see or seeing tonight and he is aware of what's going on, but Lori and Inger are the ones that were really, were leading that effort in there. So we're success, we're pleased that he's coming on board for us. An update on the Horseshoe Bar Road and I-80 interchange project, the project study report. I have to say, give Richard big kudos in his efforts in to kind of go through the process and select a company. The company selected was Dawkins. The next step is negotiating with the firm to see if we can come to terms in the contract and if Richard's successful in that, it'll come to the November meeting for approval. And that's going to be studying the I-80 Horseshoe Bar Road interchange and look at the future treatments for that intersection. Last item I want to highlight tonight, we've been talking about the Downtown Civic Space and Connectivity Study. This is the SAG-COG grant that we applied for and $316,475 for the program. It's called the Engage, Empower, and Implement Program, or the EEI. It's really going to look at the downtown connectivity, civic space, full streets kind of concept and the civic use of the town's property downtown to kind of ensure we use the highest best use for those properties in the future. It's going to have a huge presence with the community, is a huge outreach component of it, and the town is elected to partner with the Chamber of Commerce in this effort. But we were informed originally, the awards were going to be notified by September 30th. They have delayed the award notices to October 17th. So at that time, we should have a, know whether or not the town was successful in getting that grant. And with that, Madam Mayor, I'll answer any questions you may have.
I don't have any. Does anybody else have any?
Okay. Thank you very much. So with that, we'll go to Loomis Library and Community Learning Center Librarians Report.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I just want to be here to let you know what's going on with the library this month. We've got a lot going on, starting with things for the whole family. We've got scarecrow workdays. We are doing a scarecrow contest in the month of October. So you can build your own scarecrow. It's one per family. We're going to have different, you know, categories and that sort of thing, and then we're going to have them be judged and winners announced on Halloween and they're going to be displayed all around the garden. It should be really fun, really cute. Unfortunately, I forgot to write down the categories, so I do not recall what those are. I think it's Loomis Town Spirit, there's your favorite book character, there's, I want to say like most festive, like Halloweeny, those sort of things. So we do have workdays. The first one was tonight where people can come and work on their scarecrows. We do provide some, you know, we, a hot glue gun and some things that you can use to decorate your scarecrow with. We will also have one on October 15th from 5:00 to 6:45 and those are drop-in, as well as Saturday, October 19th from 12:30 to 2:00. So you can utilize those if you want to participate in the scarecrow contest. Also, for everyone, we've got the Friends of the Library Quarterly Book Sale on October 22nd through the 24th from 10:00 to 4:00. All the proceeds from that go to the Friends of the Library, which in turn helps fund things like books and our seed library and some activities, the summer reading program, that sort of thing, back at the library. So that's great. And then on November 9th, from 2:00 to 4:00, we're going to have a puzzle swap. We had one last year. It was a great success, so we're hoping that once again, people want to bring some puzzles, drop them off, pick up a new puzzle and just do something nice and cozy, because hopefully by that time, it won't be 100 degrees. It'll be more indoor weather. So for kids, we've got, of course, our Storytime every Friday at 10:30. And then we have Japanese Storytime also at 10:30 on October 16th and November 6th coming up. And then our Master Builders Club, which is our Lego Club, will be returning finally to, on October 19th at 10:30. So we're excited to have that come back. It's been on hiatus since the spring. And we have our Read to a Dog program on October 24th at 10:30, so you can come and see all the cute dogs and practice, the kids can practice their reading skills with them. And then for adults, the Placer County Master Gardeners will be, of course, be here on the, I believe it's the second Saturday of every month, as usual. The first one on October 12th will be Cover Crops and then on November 9th, they're going to do Bee Habits. And then they will also be, have docents in the garden until noon on those days, so you can come and get your questions asked and answered, questions answered. Spice Club in November will be on Bulgar Wheat. I did not write down the date on that. That will be the fourth Tuesday of the month, so whatever date that is, I think it's the 26th, I want to say. And then something exciting that we're going to have in November, actually, it'll be the same night as our, as the council meeting, so we might have to make a choice, but we're going to have Fantastic Fungi of the Loomis Basin, which will all be about the mushrooms in this area, and that's going to be with local Del Oro grad, Thea Chesney. She is an expert in her field and so she, we're really excited to have her come and talk to us about mushrooms and maybe a little bit of foraging. So that's going to be on November 12th from 5:30 to 6:30. And then I just wanted to let everybody know that we will be closing at 5:00 on November 5th, that's election night, so we're going to take a couple hours early, close a couple hours early. And that's it. I can answer any questions.
All right. Maybe you could ask Thea to come by the council meeting?
Yeah, there we go.
Afterwards. And show us what she's doing over there, so.
Yeah.
Because I know we all have to be here, but yeah.
Yep. All right.
All right, well, thank you, Sarah. Now we're going to go to the Chamber Update.
Good afternoon, evening, I guess we should say. Thank you for having me. I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who participated, volunteered, was a vendor, just came out and enjoyed the Fruit Shed Fest. It was a great event until it got really hot and miserable, so thank you for sticking through us with the heat on that, but it was a lot of fun. We had a ton of volunteers in the morning that helped make everything go pretty smoothly and then we had some fun things. We had a 10-year-old win the baking contest out of four entries of all ages and then we've, we had almost a dozen on the chalk art contest and there was multiple winners on that, so those are all on our social media. We have our next monthly mixer. It's going to be hosted at Faith Love Therapy across from High Hand there. It is in honor of their Oktoberfest event, so it is an open house. Everyone's welcome to join us and it's the 17th from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. There will be food, there'll be music from Shane Q. It should be a lot of fun, so everybody's welcome to join us. And then we have our Coffee Connect, which is the first Thursday of November the 7th. So, and that's here in this room at 8:00 AM. So that's about it. Any questions?
I just want, I just want to say thank you. It was a great event. The festival was a great festival.
It was a team effort. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Heather. Now we'll do Allied Agency. Jeff, okay, you're coming up. Okay, cool.
Well, because he was going to go first. Good evening, everybody. We'll do stats. Thank you. Great, I'll go over the stats first for the month of September. So the township of Loomis had 317 incidents, reports taken 37. Transient-related activity, six, little, up a little bit from before. Suspicious activity calls, 25. Disturbance calls, 23. Alarm calls, 17. And traffic stops, 56. We moved to the center section, which is the citizen versus deputy initiated activities. Pretty close within the previous months from that, that breakdown. Priority calls for service hangs around the same numbers as previously, previous months. And you can see all the numbers there. These are the top 10 dispositions, so what deputies are responding to and how they're disposing them out at the end of the call. Contacts at 202. Probable cause stops, 31. Reports taken, 25. Unable to locate, 19. Assist, so with other agencies, that's either fire or law enforcement, at 12. False alarms, 11. Citations, 9. Arrests, 5. Up a little bit. I don't know what WR is, and then K9 assists, and I don't have a number on that, so it must be like 1 or 0. So that is the stats for the breakdown for Township Loomis. Just some noteworthy things to talk about. It's October, which is our pink patch month. This is the fifth year that we are participating in this event, so if you see deputies around wearing patches, I have a uniform that I wear. My mother-in-law passed away from breast cancer, so I honor her by wearing pink patches on my uniform for the month of October. All the proceeds, so we do sell the patches, so if you're interested in buying a pink patch and having it as a souvenir, we do sell them down at the Loomis substation. They're $20 and all the proceeds go to, let's see, this is our Placer Breast Cancer Foundation, so through our, through our sites, and I can, I can turn this around for everyone too, so you guys can see it. So this is the website that you get when you, if you log in to buy a patch, or you can show up in person and purchase them that way also. Pretty cool program, I'm glad that we have that in place. So let's see, our, another big thing that occurred for us, we had the largest promotion pool since 1851 for the sheriff's office that just occurred, where we promoted probably close to 24 people into lieutenant spots, captains, sergeants, so on and so forth, who, Lieutenant Tyndale is now a captain and will be moving on and we have a new lieutenant that will be taking over the substation, so I'm sure he'll come and introduce himself. So exciting, bear with us. It's, it's difficult for agencies to navigate through that process, not difficult, but challenging to get everyone into new positions, get them trained up and new responsibilities, so. So there was that. Increased collisions in Township Loomis, there's an uptick in collisions that are occurring. Some of the things that we're doing to combat that, we have, every other month, we have a meeting with the school districts, we meet with the town, and we talk about the, basically where the collisions are occurring, how we can, if we can do it through engineering, through education, or through enforcement, right? The three E's of traffic. And so we know that it's there and are, are working for to, to combat that, that issue, those, those traffic collisions that are occurring. That's about it. The only, personally, I'm working on a, November 1st is Night with the Pros for the youth of Placer County. It's not just for the town of Loomis, but we're getting local pros to come. We're getting a theater up at Placer High School and having kids come in. It's a free event and they get to hear local pros talk about the sports and how they got into them, hearing them firsthand, so kind of cool event that I'm putting on. Other than that, I don't have anything else. If there's any questions, please ask away.
Yeah, what was the date for the Night with the Pros?
That is November 1st. November 1st at 6:00 PM, that's at Placer High School. I can get, I can get you more information if you need it offline.
And one more question, just for the people at home. Can you give them the site that, for the pink patch? Can you tell them this, what that site is?
Yes, let me see here. Placer Breast Cancer Foundation.org. And I believe you can go onto our website and track it down that way. PCSO, Pink Patch. And if you look, look for it that way, there's, there's also that way to, to search, search for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for asking that.
Thank you so much.
I just, I just also wanted to thank you for coming out and all the deputies that came out for the, the festival. You guys did a great job.
Oh, thank you.
A lot of extra work, so.
It was very hot and you're totally correct.
Yes, we did.
It was, it was very hot. The horses and the dogs and everyone that came out, we, yeah, that, great, great, safe turnout for us, you know, and, and still more to come. Band Spectacular's coming up. I know we just passed Homecoming, Homecoming Game, Fruit Shed, so we still have some more events coming up. Harvest Fest and, and Band Spectacular, so.
All right.
Busy season, so thank you for saying that, Jenny.
Yes, thank you for all that you do.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes.
With the collisions going up, is that, are they going up month to month or are they going, like, because it seems like with school starting, I would expect collisions to go up, is that?
Yes, with, with, with school, that concession, that, that is the, some of the sole, the root of the cause, or yeah, sole reason why that's occurring. Trying to get people to either slow down and, and obey right-of-way related traffic or right-of-way vehicle code section, so.
Is it, is it, so this is like a yearly recurring kind of thing?
I don't have the data to support that, but I would imagine that to be the case, but.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, guys.
Chief Durk, come on down.
Madam Mayor, council staff, thank you as always for allowing us to come in and talk about what we do. It's a privilege. We'll jump right into stats. 340-ish calls, as you can see, as usual, the majority of them are EMS or service in nature. Speaking to what Sheriff Billado was talking about earlier, our heat map kind of shifted a little bit. If you look right up there at Del Oro High School, you'll see a nice red mark. We've experienced the same thing with traffic. I think we have three or four accidents that happened in front of Del Oro, so we talked briefly about it and I, we're working together to figure out a way to help with that. Next slide, please. Calls are still ticking along in kind of that standard pattern, this is, this month versus last year, or September versus last year, 339 was the number, 69% medical. We had a little rise in good intent calls this year, so a little more, a few more calls for service. Next slide. Station 18, getting to your house in 7 minutes and 53 seconds, 90% of the time, which is below our goal of eight minutes. Overall, the districts at 8:57 understand that we have some areas that are a little tougher to get to. Station 20 up at King Road runs all over creation and takes a little bit longer. So we have some plans in the works that I'll talk about hopefully at the next meeting to try and bring that number down. Next slide, please. What have we been up to? We have a board meeting tomorrow night. Please come and attend. 6 o'clock at 6900 Eureka Road. Town activities, thank you first and foremost for inviting us to be a part of it. State of the Town was fantastic. It was great to see what's going on and be a part of the Public Safety Committee conversation.
Thank you for being on the panel.
Absolutely, my pleasure. Public Safety Day, I apologize I missed it. I had some other obligations, but it sounded like a fantastic event.
You made sure people came in your absence and that's all that matters, so thank you.
Absolutely. And Pancake Breakfast, Fruit Shed Fest turned out to be a great event. We are getting a new ambulance as a replacement. I was up in Canada last week checking it out, making sure it's ready to go. It should be in service hopefully by the end of the year. They have to bring it down here. We have to do some upfitting still, but that's the goal. And our third quarter newsletter, if the guy that's writing it could hurry up, it should be out by the end of this week or next. That's this guy, a lot of things going on, so trying to find the time. Before the next meeting, I won't have a chance to see all of you, so please change your clocks. Also, change the batteries in your smoke detectors if you have them. I know most of them nowadays are not using batteries, but if you do have them, please change them. And while you're at it, check your CO detector. If you have one in your house, they have an expiration date. They're usually good for somewhere between seven and 10 years. And if you're getting close to that, please go out and replace them, because what will inevitably happen is it will start beeping at 2:00 in the morning. You're going to call us because you think your house is going, being consumed with the carbon monoxide and it's really, the detector is bad. So they do have a shelf life. Please look on there, it should be a date on the back and it'll tell you when it expires. Hopefully, I was manifesting fall coming with this document. Clean your fireplace and maybe that'll help the manifestation. If you're going to burn and you have a fireplace, try and get that cleaned on a regular basis. That'll prevent chimney fires. Open burning, again, should be coming soon. Next slide, please. You will be able to see when open burning is available on our website. We actually created a direct link, so if you log on to our website, go to Residents, Current Notices and Alerts, and right there on the, that page, it'll tell you if burning's allowed. Remember, you do need a permit. It's good for a year, so if you're going to burn, make sure you follow the rules on the permit and do that. The permits are available either online or at your local fire station. One more. And if you want to be on the mailing list for that newsletter that should be out quarterly-ish, try it hard, there's a QR code or you can go to our website and log in there. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, you guys?
Fantastic.
Okay.
Thank you all for your time.
Thank you so much. Okay. So at this time, we have public comment for items that are not on the agenda. As you guys know, you have three minutes and we are not able to comment back to you, but again, you can come up and talk about any issue you'd like and we, we give you three minutes on the floor. So who would like to go first?
Mayor Youngblood?
Well, before you go, before you start, you guys don't have to get in line. It's one of those things, just one, are you all together?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, I apologize. Go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Mayor Youngblood, council members, town attorney, town manager, and the rest of your staff. My name is Brian Faircloth and I'm a resident of Placer County. My colleagues and I are here as volunteers of United Sovereigns Americans, a nonpartisan group, and we ask that you listen to our presentation and keep in mind that we're volunteers and not spokespeople. United Sovereigns Americans is a nationwide, nonpartisan organization with thousands of active volunteers in over 20 states. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens sharing alarming information about our state's voter roll database. Research of the state's voter roll database was done through hundreds of hours of research conducted by highly qualified and credentialed data teams. An analysis of the 2022 election researched by the highly qualified data teams using only official records provided by the State of California election officials indicates serious issues with compliance to federal law. We are here to present to you and to the public the results of the aforementioned analysis showing the votes cast. Counted and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution.
It's one of those things, just one, are you all together?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. Go ahead. Yes, go ahead.
Mayor Youngblood, council members, town attorney, town manager, and the rest of your staff. My name is Brian Faircloth and I'm a resident of Placer County. My colleagues and I are here as volunteers of United Sovereign Americans, a nonpartisan group. And we ask that you listen to our presentation and keep in mind that we're volunteers and not spokespeople. United Sovereign Americans is a nationwide, nonpartisan organization with thousands of active volunteers in over twenty states. Today, we come to you as concerned citizens sharing alarming information about our state's voter roll database. Research of the state's voter roll database was done through hundreds of hours of research conducted by highly qualified and credentialed data teams. An analysis of the 2022 election researched by the highly qualified data teams using only official records provided by the state of California election officials indicates serious issues with compliance to federal law. We are here to present to you and to the public the results of the aforementioned analysis showing the votes cast. Counted and certified may not all be valid and accurate under the Constitution and under the law. We are not here to cast any blame or aspersions on any elected official. We do not suggest any candidates in any race have wrongly won or lost their races, nor do we advocate for overturning or rerunning any past election. Tonight, we will present to you a resolution demanding an end to the inaccuracy and uncertainty plaguing our elections, along with a summary of our findings and the laws that apply. Though you bear no direct responsibility.
Can I ask a question? So you guys are all speaking to this? So is that correct? So his time is up. If you all are reading this, you can do three minutes each. Is that correct?
Okay, we have a little, I'm sorry for continuing here, but I just say that our next three speakers will read the resolution for you to hear. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Mayor, Town Council Members, my name is Brian Brubaker and I am here to read into record the first portion of the USA Resolution. Resolution for Legally Valid 2024 General Election. Whereas it is recognized civil, correction, well, it is a recognized civil right in the United States for every citizen to have free and fair elections. Whereas it is a duty of our election officials to guarantee our elections are accurate and free from distortion or manipulation. Whereas our constitutional system of representative government only works when the following four tenants of an election are upheld. One, the voter rolls must be accurate. National Voter Registration Act, nineteen ninety-three. Two, votes counted must be from eligible voters. U.S. Constitution, Fourteenth Amendments, Section Two. Three, the number of votes counted must equal the number of voters who voted. Four, there can be no more than one, correction, there can be no more than one in a hundred and twenty-five thousand ballots in error by the voting system. Help America Vote Act of two thousand and two. Whereas the analysis of the California 2022 general election was uncovered evidence of a massive, of massive inaccuracies that appear to violate both federal and state laws, including five million eight hundred and eighty-six thousand one hundred and ninety-eight ineligible or uncertain registration violations found within the California State Voter Roll Database. Two million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine votes cast by ineligible or uncertain registrations. One hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and eighty-five more votes counted than voters who voted. No one knows who cast them. Two million seven hundred and seventy-six thousand eight hundred and forty-nine apparent voting violations in excess of the legal standard of system accuracy for a valid federal election. Maximum allowable errors for the 2022 general election was ninety. Certification has defined, correction, certification as defined by law is an attestation of accuracy and compliance. The certification of the 2022 election appears to have been fraudulent and illegal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Council Members, Staff, my name is William Traythen. I am here to read into the record the next section of the USA Resolution. Whereas these findings trample legal accuracy requirements of the voting system during a federal election. Whereas the intent of the voters must be known factually before certification can be lawfully conducted. Whereas the 2022 general election appears to have been invalid, depriving us of the guaranteed protection of our natural rights under a government duly and provably chosen by us, the American people, resulting in incalculable damage to our families, our way of life, and the fabric of the United States. Therefore, we call upon our representatives to provide relief to the people and the assurance of domestic tranquility by joining us demanding a valid 2024 general election that upholds these existing laws and equitable principles of law. Number one, proof of citizenship, identity and eligibility required to register and vote, not an anonymous attestation. Voter rolls certified, certified accurate and available for public review and challenge thirty days before the start of early voting. Voters added after that date must bring proof of citizenship, identity, and address in person to a qualified official at each polling place. Three, hand-marked secure ballots similar to currency where imaging technology is used for tabulation. The security features must be verifiable in the ballot image. Four, systems, machines, security measures, infrastructure, and conduct are required to be compliant with federal law for fraud prevention, risk assessment, certification, testing, and implementation. Adjudication must be signed off by party, candidate, and trained citizen witnesses after being given full and effective observation rights. Candidates and trained citizens must be allowed immediate access to ballots, ballot images, and cast vote records. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Loomis Town Council and residents, we appreciate your time. My name is Laura Burns. I'm a resident of Placer County and I'm here to read into the record the last section of the United Sovereign American Resolution. Number six, ballots regardless of entry source, election operations and systems must maintain end-to-end chain of custody from voter to vote count to final canvas, including audibility, witness transfer with paper records. Number seven, a national institute of standards and technology compliant, randomized statistically valid end-to-end audit with a ninety-five percent confidence level of all elections pursuant to the Fourteenth Amendment, Section Two, must be performed. These audits are to be conducted by qualified, insured, and bonded security, forensic or financial auditors, not personnel from within the voting system. Correction, election system. Reconciliation will include the vote count, real physical ballots, adjudication, cast vote records, ballot count, qualified voter count, custody transfer, and all other paper and electronic election systems, including logs. Eight, if the total of unique variances shared here is more than ten percent of those candidates affected, unless the issues can be provably corrected with a manual recount and with full review of records. Waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent compliance from, pardon me, let me state that one more time. Number nine, waiver of requirements is not allowed. Only end-to-end system compliance from registration through certification can guarantee the intent of the people is accurately recorded. Be it resolved that the Loomis Town Council members stand in support with the concerns and remedies presented here. We implore the Placer County Board of Supervisors, California Legislature, federal legislators, law enforcement, federal and state prosecutors, judges, both judges and both California Secretaries of State and county registers of voters to cooperate and fulfill these firm requests of the people. Thank you.
Mayor, City Council, residents, my name is Adrian Yule and I'm a resident of Placer County. I am here to conclude our presentation. What you have heard tonight is a powerfully written resolution outlining massive inaccuracies in our 2022 elections, from registration through certifications. The resolution delineates meaningful remedies that will proactively protect the validity of the 2024 general election. For all Americans, your written copy cites many U.S. Supreme Court precedents, federal and constitutional mandates that support the need for these actions. Large numbers of Californians have questions about the trustworthiness of our elections. Official data show these concerns are valid and the law says resolving them is essential to the security of our liberty. The cost for not fixing the enumerated problems is immeasurable, so we urge you, put this resolution on the agenda for the next city council, where you can vote to join us in support of fair, honest, and valid elections. The United Sovereign Americans website showcases our initiatives nationwide and features some extremely informative election videos. We encourage you to visit uniteforfreedom.com and learn more about our nonpartisan organization and our goal to restore valid elections throughout our nation and our country. That's unite, number four, forfreedom.com. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience want to speak on items that are not on the agenda?
Jean Wilson, forty-three oh one Barton Road. And also election-related, I want to thank Stephanie for announcing the forum on Thursday night.
I can't take credit, Jean.
Okay. Oh, David.
But thank you for mentioning me.
Jenny did. Okay. But thank you for announcing that. It's a very important thing for people to come six o'clock Thursday and hear from the four candidates. I don't know if that can go on the town website or in your email list, but as many people as possible. The other election-related item is not for this election because this is for the future. It's about the signs, that, the candidate signs and the date of when they can be put up, which I think this year was the twenty-first of September. In the past, that probably made a lot of sense because everybody, except for a few absentee people, voted the first week of November, but we've already received our ballot this week already. We received it. So a lot of people vote right away and in that case, they've only had an opportunity to have the signs up for about two weeks instead of the previous six weeks. So before the next election, I would ask you to review the sign policy and see if maybe the signs should be able to go up a little bit earlier, whether it's a month earlier to account for elections, voting being a month earlier, or a couple of weeks, or the same number of days that it used to be. Anyway, if you could look into that, somebody put it on the back burner with a reminder for next election season to look at when the signs can go up. I think it's important that people have a number of opportunities to see those signs. Anybody that's in advertising knows that the number of, number of times that somebody sees an ad does matter. So I think in the interest of everybody getting a good share of eyes on their signs, just to look into that later. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean.
Hi, good evening. I'm Ethan Britsy. I live at thirty-six eighty-two Bethel Court and I wanted to say, first of all, thank you again to the Chamber for the Fruit Shed Festival. I had an opportunity to be a vendor for the first time and it was, it was a great event. If you could do something about the heat, I'd appreciate it because I was sweating. Yeah, I was a little bit, but it was great. And also, I wanted to thank Carol for doing a phenomenal job in helping me with documentation and different stuff for election information. It's been really helpful. Thank you. And for Wes for meeting with me to go over agenda items. It's been enlightening, to say the least. So that's, that's all that I had. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor Stephanie and Council Members, it's Aunt Baker and I'm with the Measure C Embassy Committee and thank you for your service. I'm here to encourage all registered Loomis voters to vote yes on Measure C. Back in 2016, when the Placer County closed the Loomis Library, Loomis residents united to save our library and voted overwhelmingly to approve a ten-year, quarter-cent general sales tax, the Town Council has been very good stewards of the sales revenue and kept their promise to use the majority of the funds for the library. Under local control, our library is better than before with programs and services that are tailored to meet the needs of our community. It has become an important community meeting space where residents of all ages come together to learn and connect. Continuing this existing general sales tax revenue provides the stable and secure funding source that will keep the doors of our full-service library open. Since the town has consistently followed the will of the voters by using the majority of the revenue to fund the library, Loomis voters can protect this important Loomis asset by continuing to elect Loomis officials that share our value and pledge to continue fully funding the library. That's really the benefit of living in this small town. You know your council members and you can talk to them. It is important to remember that it's not a new tax. It is relatively inexpensive at twenty-five cents per one hundred dollars. This tax is paid for by both residents and non-residents shopping in Loomis, so residents are not burdened by fully funding our library. Our committee has been working hard to get out to all the Loomis neighborhoods to answer your questions and will continue to work to get this important message out to all Loomis voters. You can contact us at our website, yesfor measurec.com, or through Neighbors and we'll try to get you the answers and we'd love to meet with you. So please vote yes on Measure C now.
Thank you, Ann. Anybody else would like to get up and speak from the audience?
Good evening, everybody. Jan Clark-Cretz, sixty-five hundred Wishingwell Way. And just to reiterate a lot of the kudos that we've already heard, State of the Town was just a great, great experience. I thought it was very informative and it went really smoothly and so I know Jenny had a part of it and Mayor Youngblood as well. It was really well done. Public Safety Day, I thought, was totally cool. The helicopter being there and all the, and you could see all the kids loving it and just seeing our, our community members coming together and, you know, just with the firemen and everything else, I just, I thought it was just wonderful. And then the Fruit Shed Fest, I think Heather, she knocked it out of the park at the last minute and I know that is a heck of a job and I just want to make sure, you know, to give them the kudos that they deserve. And then kind of piggybacking on what Jean said, and Jean, you're amazing. That was a great idea about the signs. And also, you know, I think our public works do a lot of having to pick up the signs and I know that that's a big draw on us, so maybe over the next two years between elections, we can come up with a way to make it easier on everybody. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience?
Good evening. My name is Pam Blake. I'm here to talk about Danny Cartwright. I have an objection. You think this is funny, but it's not funny. I have an objection to the first sentence on your candidate statement with the word grooming, because you know that is not correct. The, I have articles here. June twenty-ninth, Placer County High School District conducted a full investigation. There was also an investigation by a investigative law office, not just a regular law office, an investigative law office that did a thirty-page report. And I gave the Loomis news to you in July to Danny, Stephanie, and Amanda. So I have not. So I have not attended services there, so I have no conflict of interest. And I want to say, kids know before high school who they are. My nephew was a fine young man. So you're quoted here. You're quoted here. March 16th, "You cannot believe everything you read on the Internet." And I should have said something two years ago, but I didn't. But I talked with Ethan on Saturday. He's lived here for two and a half years. So I guess he's another one of your buddies, just like he was, because two years ago, I should have said something. You said, "Jan, come on up here. I'm sorry I didn't get to know you because of the Brown Act." But, "Hey, good buddy, come on up there." And there's the picture right there on your door hanger. Now, this board is supposed to be nonpartisan. Here we go, Republicans. Here we go, right here. Who are you endorsed by? It's nonpartisan, you know? And I really, and David was the only one that met with the pastor down the street. He asked all of you, "You all stay quiet." He talked to him, he's talked to him again. He'd send his kids there. So our town is better than this. You're spreading fear. The meetings are poorly attended, and they're going to latch on to that first sentence and say grooming, and it's not true. And one last thing. You remember that from four years? Ad paid for Placer County Government PAC four years ago, and you're getting more money. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience like to speak before we go to Zoom? Okay. Is there anybody on Zoom?
There is.
That might be Alina.
Okay, call in. I just unmuted. Call in line one. You might unmute yourself and try.
I think that is Alina. Based on, she said she was calling in, trying to, earlier.
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Alina Miller, Bankhead Road in Loomis. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of myself and all of my neighbors. We're a little perplexed as to why we received a letter last week about the south end of Bankhead Road being paved. As for our deeds, there are no public roadway easements, with the exception of two parcels that were given roadway easements to the county, or had given roadway easements to the county in 1976 due to parcel splits. This whole conflict started in November of 2022, when at the end of our road, we erected a gate across our private property, which then led the town to sending us a cease and desist letter claiming the roadway to be public. Yet, in fact, there have been three newly created parcels along Bankhead Road via lot line adjustments in the past year, which also do not contain any public roadway easements. We stand firm on the fact that Bankhead, south of Sierra College, is a private road and has been prior to the town's incorporation, and we want to keep it that way. Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Alina.
Patrick, I have you unmuted at my end. You can unmute and speak.
Oh, there. Is that better?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to speak on behalf of some work we did at the Blue Goose Event Center with our cameras. We recently lowered them and made them more user-friendly. So if anybody has an issue or something that goes on out on the road in front of the building, we have, you have access to our cameras. Hopefully, the sheriff, I want to make sure that we're registered with the sheriff for that. My other point is, we have our house on 5815 Brace Road. We're on the East Side Canal that the water's been shut off. And they said it's going to be shut off till sometime in April. And I just wonder if the town, I might be able to follow up with the town or anybody else here in the near future to find out what progress is going to be made on the repair of the East Side Canal, because I won't be able to keep our place green on a very low-producing well. And that's it. Thank you, guys, for doing what you're doing.
Thank you, Pat. It looks like Wes is going to make a note of that, or he is making a note of that. Anybody else on Zoom?
I'm going to try, Miguel. Miguel, you had your hand lifted, and then it went down. Did you want to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead.
Miguel, you're 5911, Gray Court, Loomis, California. My concern is, all the candidates received a sheet listing where you could place your signs and where you could not. You can't place them on public property, I'm sorry, on town property and on the street right away. And there's several signs that have been placed in those areas. And the only problem is, there's not really any, oh, if you put them, there's no real penalty for doing it. And I'm concerned that some of the candidates aren't following the rules. Like, there's a sign in landscaping right on the corner of Horseshoe Bar and Kater Road, which is against the written rule. So I would hope the town would enforce those rules. Thank you.
Yeah, of course they don't.
Is there anybody else on? There's one hand raised. No more people on Zoom?
I'm not seeing anybody.
Okay. All right. Well, then, we can move on to opportunity to comment on the consent calendar. As you know, you are able to pull an item and comment on that, and then, as well as the council is too. And not, in the interest of time, I'm not going to actually read the statement. I think by now, we all kind of know how that goes. So at this time, any of you want to pull it? If not, we'll go to the public and ask them. Okay. Does anybody in the public want to pull any items off the consent calendar?
I do. What did I write down? Number eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Item four, please.
Okay, item four. Anybody else in the audience? Okay. Anybody on Zoom? Okay. Okay, so let me repeat. Is there anybody on Zoom that has their hand up that would like to pull an item? Carol's having...
Looks like Miguel. Go ahead, Miguel.
Believe it or not, I don't have anything to pull.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. So last chance before I ask if anybody would like to, is any last chance to pull anything? You guys are good with that, so I'll move on to the motion. Does anybody want to move to approve items one through seven, and then, wait, no, one through four, and then...
One through three.
Oh, one through three, because we're pulling, yeah, yeah.
I move to approve items one, two, three, five, six, seven, nine, and 10.
Thank you.
I second. So that was Ring and Cortez. Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye.
So at this time, we can discuss, let's go in order, we can discuss number four.
Jan Clark-Cretz, thank you for the opportunity to talk about this item. I did meet with Richard to let him know that I was going to do this. And again, he's just an amazing addition to our staff. I'm just really excited to work with him. A couple things on the staff report I just wanted to bring to the public's attention. Under the STBG paving project, where it says the town received $318,000 in federal grant funding, it kind of made it sound like we actually got the money when, in fact, we have not yet gotten it. So I just wanted to make that clear. The other thing that I talked to Richard about was, as I've been canvassing, I've been listening to our constituents talk about the quality of the paving material that was used over the different projects that we've had. And just a request to consider the quality of the material that we put on top of our roads when we are fixing them. And that was about it. And just wanted to, again, thank you, Richard, for your time, and thank you for your time tonight, too.
Thank you. Okay. What about number eight? Wait, I think she was the only one. Does anybody, Pam wants to do eight? Okay, does anybody else want to comment on number four? Before we move on to eight?
Well, I can say four. Poor material quality on my street, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes. Anybody else before Pam does item eight? Okay. Thank you, Pam.
I did some, Pam Blake, I did some screen prints off of my laptop earlier today. And so the thing I have is, you have it listed as town clerk slash administrative officer. And being in that field, and you, Stephanie, too, I look as a clerk is here, an officer is there, a manager is up here. So I'm asking that the clerk be removed, that it just says town. I have to look, well, I can't see it, to get rid of the town, get rid of the clerk. So it'd be town officer.
Can I ask a question to you, based on that? So I agree with you, but I just want to ask.
Sure, go ahead.
So in HR, where I come from, we have a working title, and we have a classification. Is the clerk going to be her working title? Because if that's the case, like, I'm an HR assistant by working title, but I'm an AGPA by my classification. If that's the case, then is that where we're kind of going with that, that there's a classification title and a working title?
Not in particular. I mean, it's a good example, but, so it's, the job title's consistent with what Cricket was filling, and it's consistent with Carol's current title now as a deputy town clerk. The reason why this job description is being brought forward the way it is, because the voters voted to move the clerk position from an elected to an appointed position. So this is just transitioning and honoring the public's wishes to transition this job from an elected to an appointed clerk on there, and so it matches that. So the administrative officer, the reality is, in small jurisdictions, we all may wear many hats. And in this case, the clerk also wears the hat of doing HR and some other office administration duties as well to kind of fulfill the whole obligation of that role. So that's why it's kind of a hybrid job description on there. And clerk is one of the mandatory positions that...
Yeah, that shouldn't count, I guess, sir. Go ahead.
Yeah, is one of the two mandatory positions that are required for a local jurisdiction. There is the treasurer, whether it's elected or appointed, and the clerk, whether it's elected or appointed, and that's delegated down to local authority and the voters as to whether it's either elected or appointed. So you have to, by state constitution, have those two roles and positions in existence. So you can't remove the clerk title out of the job description, especially given that Carol is going to be doing those duties primarily as part of her role.
Okay, that was just my two cents, because I was seeing, I understand that, but it's a town clerk administrative officer. So I was thinking this would be the time to be able to remove, you know, the clerk out of it. But you're saying no. And the other thing is, typical physical requirements of the job must be free from any physical conditions. And I'm wondering about physical on the basis of, like, ADA, et cetera. I have a good friend who has her four fingers missing here, but she can grip you, like, she can grip you hard. Other people may be in a power chair or something that I'm thinking that that may set you, that may set you up for a lawsuit if somebody applies and doesn't get the job or whatever, being it says physical. And I see Jeffrey's going to say something here.
You need to read the whole sentence. The whole sentence is, "Must be free from physical, emotional, or mental condition which might adversely affect the ability to perform essential job functions." So it's not just any physical condition, it has to be one that adversely affects essential job functions. That is, that's very typical in any job description, particularly in the public sector. So you can, you can have a physical disability as long as it doesn't affect your ability to provide the essential services.
Okay, I did read the whole thing, but I only snapped a picture of the front of the duty statement. But I just wanted to bring that up, because I saw physical, and there are a lot of able-bodied, you know, people out there. So that was my only thing on number eight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, does anybody else?
I just wanted to make sure that you were clear why we couldn't take out the town clerk part of the title. It was, it's essentially a state mandate that we have someone in a town clerk position. So the fact that it stays there means that we will then be meeting state law as opposed to not. We have to then create another position of...
Yeah. No, I understand that. I just want, it's like clarification, so thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else want to comment on item eight? And I just want to clarify on Zoom, item eight or four. I apologize, I didn't ask about item four on Zoom. Is there anybody else that wants to comment on either one of those? Are there any? Okay. Does anybody up here like to, want to comment on four or eight? Okay. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move to adopt four and eight.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye. Thank you very much. Okay, so with that being said, we're going to move on to business. And the first item on the agenda is item 11, Proposition 36, support resolution.
Mayor, if I may?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
District Attorney Guyer just texted me and said that he was on Zoom waiting, but he had to hop off to make a presentation on this for somebody else, but he will get back on. So he'll text me when he's ready to be back on. So if we can skip to 12, if that's agreeable?
Are we able to do that? You guys and the staff, we're good with that? Okay, let's move on to item 12. Let's make a note that we're going to come back to item 11. Thank you very much. So item 12 is the audit report. Lori's using the restroom, so do we want to skip to 13 and go back? I mean, I am sorry for announcing that. I apologize, but I didn't mean to tell everybody. No, it's okay, Lori, go ahead. Do we want to move on to 13 and then come back to 12 and then do 11? Oh. Okay.
So Madam Mayor, so...
Okay, forget that. False alarm.
Lori went to go get Ingrid, who's doing two duties. She's actually was kind of dealing with the different council meeting at the same time as this one. So hopefully, she's done with that one and ready for this one.
So Lori, I apologize, but I just want you to know, it looked like you were... So Lori, I apologize, but I just want you to know, it looked like you were going, going to powder your nose. No, no, or whatever. So I was going to give you the opportunity to speak on this, but I, then I understood you were going to get our wonderful Ingrid. So, you're welcome to come up and speak on that. Thank you very much.
So, Madam Mayor, I'll introduce Ingrid tonight.
Yes.
Ingrid is part of, she is, sorry, my place, she's the managing partner with Richard and Company, and will be presenting the audit financial statement and company reports for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2023. Unfortunately, when I came onboard in June of '23, the firm that had historically been doing our audits was no longer available moving forward. So we're very fortunate that Ingrid and her team was willing to step up and help us through that process. So again, this is the audit for '22, '23. Next up, and later in the year, we'll be getting the audit results from fiscal year '23, '24.
Thank you.
So with that, I will turn it over to Ingrid. She has a wonderful presentation for council and will be able to answer your questions.
Good evening. Is this on? Can you hear me? So, jumping right to the, I'm controlling the slides. The next slide is outlining the reports that we issued as a result of the audit. So our primary goal is to issue opinion on the financial statements. In conjunction with that, we issued a report on internal control and compliance, and then two separate letters, a governance letter, management letter, and then appropriation limit report. I'm just going to touch on the highlights of these reports today. So just on an overall perspective, the audit opinion that we issued is considered an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements. So that basically states that they're fairly presented in accordance with the required accounting principles. So, there was a delay in completing the audit that was primarily due to staffing. Just quickly, kind of the rundown on the timeframe. The town lost its longtime finance director in April of '23. Some consultants were brought onboard. They were mostly keeping the finance department going and really didn't have time to close the books. Lori came onboard, I think it was about November of '23, started working on the closing process. Then you were hired a finance director that came onboard in March of '24. So they worked really hard to get the books closed. And so we were able to start the audit in July of 2024. So, just here today to finally get this audit behind everybody. We did identify in the audit that I'll go over later, some areas for improvement, mostly in the area of internal controls. I'm just going to not spend a lot of time on the numbers, but just point out a couple of items. On page 15 of the financial statements, it shows 1.5 million of unearned revenue. That's the ARPA money, the COVID relief money that was unspent. There was also the pension liability. If you compared the number last year to this year, it increased from about 10,000 up to 1.1 million. And that's really just because of the talpers, the plan assets. There were a lot of unrealized losses in the plan assets. And so what that does is it drives the liability up. The previous year, the portfolio had a lot of gains, so it brought the liability down. So you'll, you'll see that fluctuation, but it really isn't anything that the town did. If you look at the, basically, the equity section and the reserves that are available, it's showing 3.5 million available, and that's even after the pension liability. So, you have a good level of reserves available for future use. The general fund is on page 17, and that's more of the perspective that you look at when you're looking at fund balances for your budgeting purposes. The general fund is showing 4.1 million of fund balance, so again, a good, good, healthy level. One thing that we presented slightly different this year is the committed and assigned fund balances. So, there was an informal kind of policy that your previous finance director had approved at the council as part of the budget process to set money aside for different reserves, such as library, community facilities. They're listed in, in the report. So we broke those out in fund balance and showed them as committed and assigned. So it's really just reserves set aside, but in, so out of, out of the 4.1 million, 2.9 million is set aside in these various reserves. And you'll see in our recommendations later that we're recommending that there be a more formal policy for establishing reserves, the type of reserves, and the level of those reserves. Then, the general fund revenues and expenditures on page 19. It's actually showing in the general fund that the expenses exceeded revenues by about 72,000, so it was a slight net loss. However, that does include 600,000 that was transferred out of the general fund to the capital projects fund to cover various projects. You actually budgeted for a deficit in the general fund, meaning using some of your reserves of about 1.1 million. And the reason why you didn't reach that deficit is because you actually had revenues that were much higher than what you had budgeted. So the fact that you came up pretty much close to break even in the general fund was a good result. So, the report on internal, internal control and compliance is included within page 59 of the audited financial statements. And that identifies several areas listed as one finding that are considered to be, what we consider to be, internal control deficiencies. And it's mainly because of, in fiscal year, again, we're talking about the procedures in place in fiscal year '22, '23, so more than a year ago. We found that the finance director was handling a lot of the functions instead of the duties being divided up. So there's some examples listed here. The finance director was involved in all the processing of payroll and all vendor payments through the whole process. Whereas ideally, another person would need to do one of those steps or that there'd be some type of review or oversight, to have some type of internal control and oversight. Also, time sheets were not being approved. Only the finance director had access to the investment account. So nobody else had access to it after his passing. So I, I think, when we were out here, I think there was still not any access to it. So just having more than one signer on the investment account is a good practice. He also had prepared bank reconciliations as part of the process. Those, there's not any indication that those were being reviewed by anyone, and the same with journal entries. So, so really, in, I mean, the overall comment is just, you know, having additional people involved in the process, next slide, to help improve internal control. So that those duties, any one of those duties need to be segregated to somebody else, or the city manager or somebody else would need to review an initial. We did inquire of the former city manager. There may have been some review, but it wasn't really enough to, for us to be able to say, yes, for sure, that was being done. There was no initials documenting that review. So in those recommendations, you know, we, we recommended the hiring of additional accounting personnel, which actually did take place in May of 2024. By having one other person involved in that process, that does help to strengthen controls. Many of these items here and in the management letter have already been addressed. And management did provide responses to this finding within that report that was, that was very thorough. The other letter that's included within your packet is referred to as a required communications letter. Today's other items were required to bring to your attention. It mentions that there, we just had one adjustment during the audit process, which is excellent, considering, you know, Lori and Amy as well, having to step in and kind of pick up where somebody else had left off. So, so as far as the audit process, it went very smoothly. There were three other items that we identified, and they're attached to the letter, that are included as items we didn't adjust for. And it was mainly because of, in fiscal year '22, some of the tax revenues were not accrued back in the year that they were leaned. So we made that correction this year, but we didn't go back and change numbers in the prior year. That is one of the recommendations to improve that. So there was a significant effort that was spent by finance director to analyze, close the books. And, so we appreciate all the effort that went into doing that. I know that was difficult. We had phone calls along the way to, to help with that, but we do appreciate that, that assistance. So the last document I want to highlight is the management letter. So, the items in the management letter are ones that we didn't consider to be weaknesses, but there are other recommendations for improvement that we've included. I'll just read these off quickly. The first one is making sure that tax revenues are recorded in the proper period, based on when they're leaned. Also, the revenue received in advance needs to be deferred. That ARPA money that came in, half of it came in in fiscal year '23, and the other half in fiscal year '20, or '22, and then '23, that was taken directly into income instead of being deferred. That money has to be used for infrastructure projects, so it needs to be deferred until the expenditures were incurred. So that was one adjustment that was made, but just going forward, something to consider. Also, updating personnel manual and other policies. The employee handbook was quite old and been a lot of law changes, so we're recommending changes there. Credit card policy was another one that we noticed that was pretty outdated, that needs to be updated. And then, like I mentioned earlier, developing a fund balance reserve policy to kind of piggyback on the fact that you have been approving reserves, but, but no policy. Next item is improving the tracking and accounting for developer deposits. Now, this was corrected during the audit process, but what had been done is the deposits that are earned by, or that come into the, from the developer, get deferred as a liability. And then, as you expend it, the revenue expense gets recognized. What happened is it was basically being netted. And so the revenue and expense was not being reported correctly. So like I said, that was corrected in the audit process, but this is more of an ongoing, you know, recommend changing the procedures to make that happen during the year. Then also developing grant tracking procedures. The grant revenue has not been extensive, and really has just been accounted for on spreadsheets. So we're recommending tracking that through the accounting system by a department code or project code, rather than using spreadsheets. Also, developing an accounting manual. I think one of the things that made it difficult for new people stepping in is that there was really no documented procedures. So really, to help with future turnover, it's just a good practice to have some type of a procedure manual in place. Closing checklist, this would be a list of items to, to go through when closing the books. Kind of goes along the lines of the accounting manual. Also maintaining a file of journal entries with supporting documentation. When we were doing the audit and looking for journal entries, there really wasn't a binder that had all the entries and the, and the related supporting documentation. So staff had to do a lot of digging to, through the computer, to, to find the information that we needed. And then the last item that relates to an adjustment that we had during the audit is just looking at vendor payments after year-end to see if those relate to the previous fiscal year, that they would need to be accrued back. Like I said, we just found one item like that, but just something to, to think about procedural-wise. So that concludes my presentation, unless you have any specific questions or anything you would like me to clarify?
Okay. All right.
I don't have any questions, but I do have a few comments. Thank you for all the work that you did, and I think Amy for all the work that they did. You know, we all know that we had a small staff, and that we've increased. And we've, we've taken a look at this, and as you said in this, we have corrected, or not even corrected, we've, we've changed some of our policies and added new people. And being in a small business, it's sometimes, especially after many years, things just get going and rolling, and we are taking a look at all those things. So I, I really wanted to thank our staff for helping and, and you for going through those and pointing those things out. One of the things that I want to see, too, is, and we've talked about doing this, is updating our policies and our reserve policies and our, in our, and our, even our staff policies. We've all talked about that. I think that's something that we all want to do. So, I, I feel really good about this. And I also, we've also talked about updating our technology and making some of our programs more easier and making this process a lot better. So, I just wanted to say thank you.
I just have one quick comment also, is that I want to thank Lori also in that process. You have, thank you so much. I've said this before, but we really appreciate you staying on. I know you were planning on leaving a long time ago, but you've been so gracious to give us extra time. And also, I want to, I want to thank you for your hard work, but also thank you, Wes, because this is the first time we've had a third party give this analysis to the council, which is a much more appropriate way to go about that. So I just wanted to thank you, Wes, for doing that. Thank you for your hard work. And I am, I'm very proud of our staff, led by Wes, to implement these new processes and controls. I'm very, I'm just, I'm really excited about the, the way that Loomis, as our staff and our town, is headed in the right direction. So, thank you very much.
Want to go ahead, or do you, yeah, go ahead. I know you were looking for this one.
Right. I, I just have a comment to make, and, and so, first of all, Ingrid, thank you. That's a very thorough report. I did go through it and recognized about the ARPA money not being classified correctly as deferred revenue, and therefore that throws off, meaning into the future fiscal year. So that throws off, it, by classifying it as current revenue, now your revenues are overstated and your liabilities are understated, rather than putting it to its correct fiscal year. So thank you for catching that. And that, that's a simple misclassification of grant funds, but still, it throws off your financials. So thank you for your attention to detail. I may want to make a comment about the, about the whole process here. Now, Wes Heathcock was hired in 2023, and so these findings, as Ingrid had said, were for fiscal years prior to Wes's hiring. So this is for, you know, the findings of our previous town manager and financial director. But once, here's a, here's a part about leadership that I want to talk about. You know, when Wes came on and, and he started trying to analyze his new job, his new position, and the, the office circumstance that you're in, then part of leadership is recognizing deficiencies. And you saw some deficiencies based upon your previous experience in other positions. And some of those deficiencies, I believe, are mostly because of our boutique, our boutique setting here, where many people are wearing many different hats. You know, we're not a large municipality like Sacramento or any other large municipality, where they have the, the personnel, the staffing, to have the separation of duties that you mentioned, Ingrid. Everyone ends up being overextended. And I think that was the case here with, with Town of Loomis. And it's part and parcel with growing pains. Now, we can, we can look like Mayberry, and we can feel like Mayberry with our friendly culture and our neighborliness, but we cannot operate like Mayberry. We have to be, we're held to the same standards as any of these large municipalities like San Francisco or Sacramento. And so, kudos to you for taking the lead on rebuilding our financial department, and, because it's sorely needed. Going over my notes here, and also thank you for the Town of Loomis organizational assessment, because that's another tool that we can use to identify who's doing what, what is appropriate, what's inappropriate for a position. So a person does not get overextended, overworked, and working out of class, as it were. And the, and of course, the lack of separation of duties and the lack of job skills. It's critical to note that this is not staff's fault, and I want to make that clear and highlight that point. And it's not staff's fault, because it is a growing pain of a boutique, small municipality like we have. And so, though there were some deficiencies and some maybe... deficiencies and some maybe just veering off course of gap, it's, like I say, this is not a finger pointing report or analysis. This is, we are doing the best we, we can with what we have, but what we want to do is fix a problem and move forward. And so I want to extend a special thank you to Carol. And, and that is for stepping up after the death of our previous financial director, because a lot of weight came upon your shoulders and you had to wear many different hats, as you, as you do right now, but even more so. And as, and the staff was having to pick up the slack here and there. So thank you for the extra hours that I know you worked and the stick-to-itiveness that you have. And so I will close my comments with that. But I also, oh, but I do have another thought here, and that was this. And Ingrid, you'll be familiar with this. There's a concept in accounting called the triangle of fraud. And that's where there's three elements that are in place in all instances of fraud. And one is, I have it written down here, the opportunity, the motivation, and the rationalization. And then you'll probably agree with me that if our previous financial director was not an ethical and honest man, that we could have been robbed blind because of our lack of separation of duties and so forth. And so we are lucky in having such a good individual previously. But with these separation of duties, it'll, it makes it so that triangle of fraud, that those three elements are much harder to have in place with one person. And there's an article that I pulled, just to show you that this is not some esoteric idea that I came up with. It's an article that states the, the former Ontario County Clerk stole $453,000 over a decade. Audit reveals after his death. And I'm not going to read the article to you, but what he was doing was he was, it was with the cash deposits. And since he had total control, there was no separation of duties. He was not, not putting in all of the money and he was withdrawing in hundred dollar increments. So reports were delayed, bills were being delayed as far as the payment of the bills because he was reconciling the account by transferring funds from other accounts. And it's just a rob Peter, pay Paul operation. And so because of all these bills and things being delayed, red flags were raised. And so luckily, that never happened here because we did have an honest and ethical financial director. But it could happen. It did happen for Ontario. And so it's all the more reason why these audits, be it internal or external, are important. So again, thank you, Ingrid.
Thank you, Ingrid.
Thank you.
Oh, you have, oh, sorry. Wait, don't go. David has a comment.
So I, I want to thank Councilman Bacart Ray for pointing out, because it did sound like you were attack, not necessarily attacking, but it sounded like everything was Roger's fault and we should never have done that. And it, it really wasn't the case. It really was that we were a small organization. We didn't have, we didn't have the staff to really do all the oversight we needed to do. And yeah, and the fact that it came out so close after him passing, I think is a testament to him. And I really thank you for those comments. I had one question. It's a math question, and it's completely not relevant to any of this stuff. But, but are you going to be around after? I don't want to take up the time if you're going to still be around after the end of the meeting?
I could.
Okay. It's, it's just tiny. It'll probably take you five minutes, but I don't really want to take the rest of this time.
Okay.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
It's not a word problem, is it?
I have a physics question for her.
Oh, okay.
It's a physics question.
It has to do with the audit.
Okay. For anybody that doesn't know, obviously, he's the king of physics. So yeah, he used to teach it. Anyways, let's, so is DA Guyer ready or?
No.
Okay.
Madam, Madam Mayor.
Oh, yeah, 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 that's right.
But I.
Public comment, yes.
I'd be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity tonight. We had our accounting technician, April, join us in May of this year. That was a key part in this process as well, too. So I'd like, I'm putting you on the spot, April. Stand up and so everybody can see who you are.
Oh, that's April.
And we're very fortunate to have.
Thank you, April. Thank you. All right. Now, public comment, and I apologize. Does anybody have public comment on the wonderful audit that Ingrid did?
Jan Clark-Cretson, thank you for the opportunity to talk about this item. Just wanted to thank Ingrid for your hard work on that. I went through it and I just have a couple of questions. But for the council, you know, the audit is done every year. And so what it does is it gives you an opportunity to shore up the things that might not be done right. So it really shouldn't be, you know, unless somebody's doing something blatantly wrong, you know, like Danny mentioned, and they're doing it on purpose, audits really are meant to help you shore up and help you do things that are right. And so what's really cool about the situation that you're in now is that you've got now all the steps you need to take to make your, your accounting department, you know, shore up and just like what, what she is recommending. So actually, you're in a really, really good position. My question for Ingrid is, at the end of one of your letters, you had a recommendation for the council to do a resolution. And I just wanted to know if, how that resolution will come forward. Is that something that our new financial director will do?
Oh, yeah, it was the back part.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Sorry, was your, I'm, you have a question?
Ingrid, you can come up to the podium, yes.
So is it the fund balance policy? Okay. Yeah. So really, that's just something that would need to be drafted by staff and brought to the council for approval. So yeah, I don't have any specifics other than I can provide examples of what other small towns and cities are using. But yeah, that would be something.
And Wes, we're already planning to do that.
Yeah. And that's something typically that during the budgeting process, you would bring that forward as well, in, in addition to everything else that we were working on as well. So that's, that's an appropriate time to deal with it.
Yeah. Oftentimes, the policy itself is embedded within the budget. We've seen that with a lot of municipalities, that it's, becomes part of the budget.
Well, thank you very much, and we look forward to that coming up next year. Before I move to Zoom, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to speak on this item? Or have a question or a thought? Okay. Let's move to Zoom. It looks like Miguel had his hand up.
Go ahead, Miguel.
Miguel, you could. It's 5911. Great court. My question is, since I'm running for the office, what is the role of the elected treasurer in this process? According to the ordinance, the way I read it, it's supposed to be a check and balance. And the treasurer is supposed to review and approve all the revenues and expenditures. So I'm wondering how this would work out.
I think we're out there to address that in the policy and procedures portion of that as we move forward in that role. As you remember, in the past, Roger was both right, the finance director and the treasurer, the elected treasurer in there. So it, it was kind of a little convoluted. And it's something with the policies and procedures what would need to get cleaned up.
Thank you, Wes. Is there anybody else on Zoom?
No.
Oh, it looks like Miguel's still talking, or he's trying to. It said Miguel was talking.
No, that, that was all, the only thing I, there was a appointed treasurer after Roger passed away. And I'm still curious about the, the role. I mean, there's an ordinance that specifies what the treasurer is supposed to do. So I guess what you're saying is there'd be procedures and policies put in following that ordinance for the role of the treasurer.
Wes, you want to comment on that?
Yeah, you're, you're right, Miguel. So that's something we need to establish in alignment with the ordinance and stuff. So I'm not prepared tonight to talk specifically about what the duties are. It's something that's going to develop over time when you get it figured out on the back end and do the policies.
Thank you, Wes. Is there anybody else on Zoom? Okay. With that being said, it looks like item 12, we receive and file. So again, is, nope.
No, I'll text him right now and then we can just move to.
Okay. So let's do item 13, Pioneer. And then I guess we will move back to item 11 when DA Guyer is back on Zoom. So yeah, Pioneer, at this time, you can come on up. Yes. Well, I mean, he can still introduce her. She just, I said she could come up to the podium. Is that okay, Wes?
Yeah, I apologize. I don't recall her name. Maybe she could introduce herself.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. My name is Gina Stassi-Vanacor, and I'm the Director of Communications for Pioneer Community Energy.
Thank you. Okay to go? Yeah. Thank you. I'm here tonight just to provide a little bit of background and context for the origin of the Second Amendment to our JPA. By way of background, over time, our JPA had become very, very cumbersome. And in January, our board undertook
the effort of incorporating previous amendments for better readability of our JPA. Additionally, we wanted to streamline the process for amendments to the board for operating and administrative provisions of the JPA. Most importantly, we wanted to revise Pioneer's JPA agreement to align with the processes for similar JPAs throughout California. That led to a series of discussions. And through this course of discussions with member agencies, two requests were made. The City of Rockland requested that Section 14 be included in Section 19 as it relates to the withdrawal of a member agency. And the Town of Loomis requested an extension of the notice period for members. So thank you to the, to the town manager and council member Ring for meeting with our Pioneer Board chairs. Where we landed on that was an extension from 30 days' notice to 45 days' notice. From there, Pioneer's Board in June approved the revised, second amended and restated JPA and has circulated that out to all of the members for approval. To date, nine of our 10 members have approved that. I did want to reaffirm a few facts for you. There are some things that will not change as related to this. Pioneer will continue to notice amendments to all member agencies 45 days in advance in order to provide an opportunity for member agencies to provide feedback and input. The other thing is that expansion of the JPA with new members will require the approval of each current member agencies. With that, I did want to acknowledge Councilmember Ring, who serves on our board and has been involved in these discussions and decisions, and Councilmember Cortez, who has also served on our board. And I also wanted to make sure that our general counsel is willing to meet and answer any questions if there are any outstanding.
That's great. It's perfect. And thanks for providing the history and the discussions on there. There's a little bit more context on the back end of it, is we, we were fortunate enough to meet with Pioneer's staff and talk about the concerns that were brought up by the jurisdictions. And we're definitely thankful that there was an agreement to do the 45-day notice extension. But you know, it's, some of the context is, as we were seeing it, there's some other potential challenges. If the JPA has a lot more autonomy than with a two-thirds vote, you can make those amendments and all that stuff. So I'm actually going to turn it over to our town attorney. He actually provided the memo in here, the kind of reference to those items and be able to answer any council or public comments or questions on that.
Why, thank you, Wes. I don't know how you'd like to approach this. I did provide you with a memo. I want to be very clear on two points. One, I agree that there are a number of JPA community choice aggregators who have similar provisions to the language that they're proposing. So this, you would not be unique in having Pioneer allow amendments to the joint powers agreement by a vote, a super majority vote of the Pioneer Board. However, I did, so it was my obligation to point out to you that there are a number of provisions in the joint powers agreement that could then be amended by the board that would not come back to the council. I pointed out the ones that I thought were potentially more significant. Just to be clear, there's no indication that Pioneer intends to make any of these changes. So it's a little bit of a thought exercise on my part. I'm happy to go through any of them if you want to talk specifically about them.
Yeah, sure. Is it turned over to Wes?
I'm done unless, I mean, I can read through them, but I.
Okay. How about this? Do you guys have any comments before he reads through them either way? Would you guys like him to?
Do you, yeah. I mean, if you want to read them, I have, yeah.
Because he's asking if, I'm just trying to clarify. You're asking if we're okay with you reading through them, correct?
Right. So the items that I had particularly highlighted, Section 5A of the joint powers agreement describes the composition of the governing board, which is currently two directors appointed by Placer County and one from each other voting member of the JPA. There is nothing then that would stop the joint powers board from changing that to modify the seating or the voting procedures. In particular, I had noted, future changes could, for example, provide for representation based on population or some other metric. So instead of each member having a seat, it could be seats allocated based on population or based on some other, you know, energy usage or some other thing.
Okay.
So that was one. Section 8, which identifies the Pioneer Board actions that require a super majority vote. There are a number of those, involuntary termination of a member, amendments to the joint powers agreement itself, property condemnation, imposition of contribution requirements. A future Pioneer Board could eliminate any of these super majority voting requirements or could eliminate the requirement that a member's governing board agree to a contribution requirement. Again, no indication that they are planned to do that, but it, it could be done. And just to keep in mind the process. So the process is, the town will receive a notice 45 days before an action went to the JPA board. So you would have 45 days to discuss it internally, potentially contact other jurisdictions if you had concerns, give direction to your member. But it's 45 days. And then ultimately, on a two-thirds vote, a change could be, could be done to the, to those provisions. That was one. Another was Section 12, which provides the debts, liabilities, and obligations of the JPA are not the debts, liabilities, and obligations of its member entities. To be clear, under joint powers law, debts, obligations, and responsibilities of a JPA are the obligations of its members unless the joint powers agreement says otherwise. So this has very standard language that says the obligations of the JPA are not obligation of the members. And I don't know any reason why the JPA Board would remove that, but they could. That's just one that could be changed. And, and you could find yourself on the receiving end of debts and obligations of the joint powers authority. Another would be the circumstances under which a member can be involuntarily removed from the JPA and the process required. This could be modified by the JPA Board, for example, shortening the required notice to the member to be terminated or the process for challenging termination. Again, it's just something to be thinking about. And then lastly, Section 19 provides the process for amending the joint powers agreement. So the current amendment preserves a number of rules for member approval and requires that 45-day notice to members. But because Section 19 can be amended on a two-thirds vote, any of those could be taken out. So there's nothing in it that says you can't change Section 19 without a vote of the members. So again, I'm not trying to be an alarmist about it. I just felt I needed to point out to you that there was.
We appreciate that. Yeah. Now, previous committee members, would either of you like to say anything from your experience of being on Pioneer? I know that you're the one that brought it to our attention.
Yeah. I have comments, but if you, since you are the current, if you'd like to, if you'd like to go first, go ahead.
I can give you a little more, I can give you a little more context from where, from my perspective, what happened.
And before you start, I just want to say to the other two council members and myself, I'm not saying you guys can't speak. I just, I want them to at least speak first because they've been on, you know, so hopefully you understand that. Go ahead.
So thank, I want to say thank you to both Wes and Jeff, first of all, for bringing this to my attention. And thank you to Gina for, for being here tonight. The, the way that it is presented is that the Town of Loomis came to a compromise with Pioneer after our meeting. And I would not say that the meeting was And I would not say that the meeting was very, it was definitely cordial, and we were all professional about it, but I don't think that we agreed on anything. Like, I felt like the whole meeting was just, this is, I disagree with this, and they were like, I disagree with that. And so the compromise essentially was, we will change it to 45, and then I will bring it back to you, to us, to discuss it. Because I didn't feel like at that point in time it was right for me to do anything else for all of you and for the rest of the town. When I brought up these cases at that meeting, it was always said, you know, the argument was always, there's no plan on doing this. Why would we ever do that? Pioneer will never change these things. And my comment on all of that is, I don't like the fact that I have to trust another entity just based on their word. Especially if I already have, I don't have to trust you. I can just say, look, I have a little more control now. Why should I trust you? I mean, no offense, I deal with you all the time, so I do, this isn't personal at all. But in one of the, one of the cases that I did bring up was the changing of the Board. They were like, we're never going to do that. There's no intent of ever doing that. And then their very last meeting, they even said, we should probably look at this again because we're talking about expanding. We want to make sure that the Board functions. So at the time, there was no plan. They weren't lying to me at the time. It wasn't like they were being facetious. But at the time, there wasn't, but it does look like going forward, there is going to be some kind of change to the Board structure. Let's see, I want to make sure I hit everything. Oh, one of the other arguments that they made for doing this, and I do agree with part of it, is that if you want to make a small change, it then takes a lot of effort to do. So like, what we wanted to do on the Board was change the executive director position to the CEO position. And that's in the JPA, and so it takes every Board, every jurisdiction to agree to doing that and to come back to us. And we have to say, yes, you can do that. And that does seem excessive. But it also doesn't seem like it is such a life-threatening thing that it can't, it's not... To me, it doesn't matter if it takes six, seven months for that change to happen. I don't know if that really affects the day-to-day businesses of whether he's, whether Don is called the CEO or the executive director. I don't really know, but to me, it's not, it's not so necessary that it has to happen right away. And so that argument that it does make it more difficult to make changes is kind of a pro to me. I like the fact that it's hard to change that because we could, it's, we're dealing with, this is important to us. I do, I agree with a lot, with what Jeff said. I think that, I hope you had a chance to read it and look over them. I think that, I would like a little bit more clarification, just in a second, on what a contribution requirement is, if it's what I think it is. One second. But the Section 19 is probably the, probably one of the most important bits that we kind of really want to stay, at least in my opinion. Because if we're saying you can't change this except for these certain instances, and then one of that bit where you can go back and change those certain instances is not something that we have to agree on, I think that that's, I very much disagree with that one. But can you ask, answer me, just, is a contribution requirement really what I think it is where it is? They say you owe us money?
It can be. Now, right now, the town makes, the members make no contributions, right?
That is correct.
Yeah, so, but there could be a scenario under which the JPA needs revenue for some purpose. Maybe an expansion of a program. I mean, there could all be very legitimate reasons, but a contribution could be essentially a capital call, sort of. We have a need for some additional revenue. We need to make some changes to how we operate. And so we need all the members to contribute some amount of money.
That's kind of what I thought it meant.
And of course, remember that you retain the right to withdraw from the JPA.
Right.
Right, so it's not like you're locked into this forever.
Right.
However, withdrawing from the JPA is kind of the nuclear option, right? I mean, it's something that you don't want to do because the residents of the town benefit from being a member of the JPA.
Yeah. And I do, I do want to highlight that last point, and that is that the Town of Loomis is, at least in my opinion, I am, I am the council, I very, I think it's very important that we remain in Pioneer. I think that the benefits that we gain from this are huge, especially for our citizens. So I have no interest in leaving the JPA. I don't, I'm not suggesting that in any way whatsoever. I just think that the issues that our legal council brought up are important issues, and that they need to be discussed.
So, Amanda, Councilmember Cortez.
Okay. First, thank you, Gina. Hi, nice to see you. Thank you both for coming. I, I want to say that for something that seems to be kind of important, I would, and I, you know, I, I don't mean this in any, like, rude way, but I am a little bit disappointed that Don didn't come if it was very important. We've had very important matters regarding PCTPA, and Matt Click, the executive director, came himself. And so I would like to just say that first off. But I do really appreciate you ladies sitting through all of this almost to the very end. Still with such a sweet smile on your face, so thank you very much. David, I appreciate your attention on this. So this is my, my thought on this. So it's, this JPA includes like six counties right now, right?
It's three counties. It's, well, it's actually, 10 members, two counties, and two towns.
Okay, but, okay, all right. Well, what my, I guess I, what I'm thinking is, it's like, my, my whole issue is that I'm worried that Loomis will lose our voice. And I do not want to be, I don't want to be a contrarian. Like, I know Loomis has a, you know, a reputation of, you know, not doing what everybody else does. And I, and I'm not trying to be, you know, make an issue, but I, our constituents are very interested in having a voice in the region. And my, my concern is that if we, if we agree to this, that we could get lost like how we have with Seco. Like, we have a seat at the table, but we don't really have a voice. And although it's not the same because Roseville has its own electric company, but typically, we tend to get lost in the big three, Roseville, Rockland, and Lincoln. And Loomis, we get the scraps or we get ignored completely, and I really want to avoid that. It is very important to our community that they have a voice, that they have, they have choices. And so for me, that is what I'm concerned at, that we would completely get swallowed up in the region. And so I don't know that I can in good conscience, like, agree to just get full autonomy. And it had been brought up to me prior by one of your Board members also, and I had said the same thing. Like, I don't think I agree with the full autonomy. And I, I don't think you'd like that answer, but I, I just, yeah. I think our constituents would not be happy with us if we took away their voice.
Anybody else want to speak on that? Okay, go ahead.
So, after looking this over, this appears to be an amendment to the bylaws. I've served on several boards, several organizations, and every organization has bylaws. Bylaws are typically rarely changed. And, but I did sit on a board recently where we did change one bylaw, and it was simply because it addressed an item that is of not common occurrence, not common occurrence, but semi-regular. And because of the arduousness of changing your bylaws to address a changing issue, it was decided to remove that from the bylaws and put it to the discretion of the Board for quicker, more expedient, and more economic action. So I agree that there are special circumstances that could warrant amending of the bylaws. And the Second Amendment here addresses one, two, three, four, well, there's five sections that our council has identified. It may address more, but it's, it appears to be not a single issue change as in the example that I just cited with my organization. Okay, so it could be that because of the scope of the, the scope of this Second Amendment, that would the council be amenable to perhaps taking a little more time to discuss this in detail, get some more information on the, on the various effects of the Second Amendment proposal? And it may sound like kicking the can down the road, but I'm not inferring that at all. What I mean is, it just, it allows us a little bit more time to get our mind wrapped around some of these proposed changes. And as Jeff had illustrated here, what some potential consequences of those could be, because you cannot predict what future Boards will do. We can, we can take an assessment of what the current Board is right now because that's what we're dealing with. But for future Boards, you don't know who will be on the future Board. So, you know, in that more grander view, that I think that it would warrant some more time for us to look at. So could we perhaps take another month, another 30 days, to, and review this again next meeting? That would be my ask of the council, if there's support for that.
Can I ask a question? Yeah, so we'll let you talk and do your questions, and then we'll come back to that. How about that?
Sure.
So we just got this for us, who do not sit on the Pioneer Board on Thursday. So it is kind of a bit of a lot to take on. And I have also been on many Boards, and I have, nonprofits have changed the bylaws so that two-thirds of a vote could, could make a change in the bylaws because they had issues of not everybody showing up. But that doesn't seem to be the case in this. It's, it's a different reason. I'm, if we allow it to go this way, Section 19, would that be, would that Board just be able to remove, say, Loomis from the JPA in a vote?
No, no. So what I didn't spell out in more detail is, the change to Section 19 would allow changes to the Joint Powers Agreement on a two-thirds vote. There are some exceptions. One of those exceptions has to do with the process by which members can be withdrawn or can withdraw. There's also a whole lot of other provisions in there that the Board could amend on a two-thirds vote. I highlighted really only five that I thought were kind of the most important from sort of a macro sense of how a Joint Powers Agreement works. Remember that a Joint Powers Agreement is an agreement where co-equal agencies get together and agree to share powers and to exercise them jointly for the benefit of all, right? And so what we have is a change to the Joint Powers Agreement, which is the document that governs how those shared powers are going to be exercised, right, those common powers are going to be exercised. So, no, there is a process for terminating a member. I believe that is one of the provisions that would not be changed. Or no, the withdrawal procedure would not be changed. The involuntary termination process could, in theory, be changed. But Section 19, Section 19 is the section that is specific to how future amendments to the Joint Powers Agreement would be made.
Okay. And this hasn't really exactly the same thing, but I just had an experience where I'm the alternate on LAFCO, and the mayors met, and I was to be rotated in May, and the mayor changed the rotation, and so I'm still the alternate. And so I, not that that has anything to do with this, other than I don't, I want to make sure that I'm looking at all the different pieces of it. And I definitely want to be a team player. I definitely don't, I don't have any issue other than I think that maybe waiting till next month might be better for me because I just really need to understand this. And I apologize for that, but I just really want to know that I'm making the right decision for the town.
Are we able to table this and have some more discussion? Because I will go on as a third, that I think that we need a little more time.
It is at council's discretion whether you table the item or take action tonight.
Okay. I would like to hear from Councilmember Ring and Councilmember Cortez. If you both kind of, I mean, let's table, let's go back to the previous question, and if you guys both...
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to take more time on this. I, that was just my, my concern immediately when, when going through all of this. But I'm willing to have more discussion on it.
I just meant because, like, you know, he said he wanted to, sorry, I just touched it. I apologized, Danny. And then she, her question, when she had her opportunity, she said that, so I want to give you guys both the opportunity to say yes or no.
Yeah, but do not, don't we need to do public comment?
Yes, I just want to ask that, where we're going with this, because it sounds like we have 45 days. Or we have to take action fast, but we need a little more time.
No, the 45 days is a provision within the JPA Amendment that's separate from council's action tonight.
Okay, so basically, we could act on this next month or the month after that. There's not like a timeframe that we have to go back to them and say...
I'm sure they would want it reviewed sooner than later, but one more month at this point, I don't think would be detrimental.
I'll go to the public. Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not trying to delay it.
No, no, we know you're not.
Just a couple more comments. So there's really, aside from a bunch of, not trivial, but smaller changes, where you're changing the name to Pioneer, or you're changing the name of the seat, the executive director to the CEO, those, I have no problem with any of those things. But really, there's only one, there's only one real big change to this, which is the way in which the agreement gets amended. Is that correct? Yeah. So that's really all, it's not like they're changing all these other things. It's just that how does this document get changed going forward? That's what's happening. So that's all, and the issue is that when, if we turn the power back to the Board, I mean, as it's made up now, I think that we're probably safe. But I don't know who's going to make it up in the next, after, in four months, right?
Yeah, that's the thing.
And so do we want to give the, the future Boards or any of the, the current Board, the authority to make the changes to the, to this document without our, without our approvals, essentially? And so that's, so it's not like all these other things are really changing. It really is just one change saying that there's a possibility that all the other things could change.
That's the most important thing, like you said.
No, I agree, yes.
So, what I...
One more thing, sorry, I had another thing that I forgot. And at the last, so a comment was made that we're the only one who hasn't done it yet. And at the last, the meeting where we approved this at the Board, I even said, I requested, I said, please have your legal teams, individual jurisdictions' legal teams, look at this to make sure that everything's okay. And, I mean, I can make the request, but I can't force it upon them. So I don't know if that happened at all, but I did, I did ask for it. And I really, I don't see this as Loomis standing in the way of everybody else. I really feel like we're protecting everybody else, and we're just the ones who happen to have a good legal team that...
To take into it.
Yeah, yes, to take a look for us. Okay, that's all.
So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and open this up to public comment, so they have a right to speak on this situation or the item as well. So is there anybody, thank you, thank you very much for coming tonight, you guys, and...
Thank you so much.
Under the circumstances, yes, thank you so much. Is there anybody in the public that's currently here right now that would like to get up and speak on the item? Okay, all right, is there anybody on Zoom? Okay, so I will bring it back to you guys, because we have a direction. Review and discuss the proposed, okay, and provide direction to staff. So is that our direction that we want to...
Well, I think the direction in my, what I'm hearing is that we need to talk more with them about 19, if that's, that, that's the issue.
Yeah.
That's what I'm hearing. Just to be clear, we did propose several alternate approaches, right? We, we suggested to be, that we do similar to what I had suggested, which is just call out a few select provisions of the Joint Powers Agreement that could not be amended without a vote of all the members. So happy to have more conversations, but I think to Councilmember Ring's point, the response was, we'll give you 15 more days. I don't know whether the response will be any different this time, but that doesn't mean we can't try, have another conversation.
Maybe I can suggest that if the direction is the staff to go back to Pioneer Energy and try to continue some conversations. We could do that until we get to an impasse point or an agreement, and then bring that forward back to council for discussion, if that's the will of the council.
I think that's...
That was what I was going to say. Do we, is it something that we are, do we want them to go back, staff to go back to Pioneer and discuss this? Or do we want more time to decide whether or not we want to approve this?
I think a little bit of both. I think we...
Or have sent staff back. I mean, that's, that's really the thing. And we, I mean, we still... And we, I mean, we still have to take public comment, but that's kind of-
Sure.
If we go by with what Wes was saying, then it's a different thing.
Right, and, and because staff has an idea, they've heard our deliberation, and they have an idea of what we're, what we're angling toward.
Yep.
And so I feel confident in their ability to negotiate and then come back to us.
Do you all agree with that? Okay, let's do that then. So if you guys could go deliberate, and then come back to us with more information on possible agreement?
Our suggestion is continued indefinitely. If we can bring it back in 30 days, we will do so.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, with that being, oh, what? I'm sorry, no, go ahead.
Do we have to vote on that then?
Uh, no. It's direction.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just direction, yeah.
Okay, so with that being said, is DA Guyer ready to present?
Yeah, he is going to hop on in just any minute. He's, yeah.
Very, oh wait, no, that's Miguel. It looks like Miguel might-
Oh, did he have any? Okay.
Oh. Do you want, you want me to keep going down to 14? Item 14, town?
Um, yeah, uh, yeah.
Or should we skip to 15, and then go 11 to 14? Because 14's going to take the longest, right? Okay, so, all right, let's keep this in mind. We're going to 15, then we'll go back to 11, and then we'll finish with 14. How is that? Okay, so, item 15. And that is the planning commissioner.
Madam Mayor, this one should be very relatively straightforward. At the last council meeting, council provided staff a direction to bring back a ordinance to amend the Loomis Smith Code 2.36.060, and to look at delegating the compensation for the planning commissioners to by resolutions for the council. The other amendment was in there to require that an application be on file for anyone that is appointed to the commission on there. So staff has made those edits, and in the recommendation tonight is, is to, is hold the processing hearing, take public comment on item, and waive the first reading, and direct staff to take and put it on the, the next available agenda, the November 12 meeting for ratification.
Sounds good, but I will let you guys ask any questions before we go to the public? Do you have any comments, question, comments, concerns? All right, so-
I just want to say real quick, thank you to staff for bringing this forward so quickly. I mean, we talked about it last month, and here, next month, we're acting on it, so I think that's, that's great.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you. And thank you. So I'll open up to the public now, for any comments that they would like to have.
Jean Wilson, 4301 Barton Road, and longtime planning commissioner. I think having the application is an excellent idea, and there, there used to be a tradition that, that was fairly regular, that when a vacancy occurred, or was going to occur, then applications were basically solicited by an announcement in the newspaper or something. And anyone that wanted to, to apply then had a means to do so, and it didn't mean that a council person had to select from that group of people. But sometimes it would give them an idea of some people that, especially if they didn't have somebody in mind already, to look into some people, and they would have an application with some, some, some information on the person's background. Or in my, in my case, I didn't, I applied and was not very well-known at that time, so I didn't get it for, I don't know if it's one or two times, but then I'd been participating in the general plan meetings, and so the person who appointed me first, the first time, had, had some idea of capabilities, as well as an application. And I, I thought that system worked really well, just like when there's an open council seat that you, you have to fill in a vacancy, you ask for an application and interview those people. I think particularly, it's a good idea for, for when you are approving an applicant, when a council member says, here's the person I want you to appoint. I think that was appropriate. I think maybe it was David or someone said, I, you know, I don't have any objection to this person, but I don't know anything about them. And Nate was here and talked about himself.
That's right.
And that was fine, but I think it would be a good idea if you did have some idea of who the people were that you were appointing. So I think that's, that's excellent, and I think it's a good idea to change it to by a resolution when you're doing the pay, rather than the more complicated process. I do have one request that you would consider. At the end of 2.36.060, which is on the pay, and it says that the pay is for commission meetings, I would request that you consider adding a phrase such as, and related responsibilities, or other responsibilities, or related activities, because the planning commission has things that we do, it makes it sound like all we do is go to a meeting. And we do have preparation for meetings. Sometimes we maybe don't have a meeting, but we've met with the planning director to talk about things. We've maybe met with, with Wes and a developer. We may have been not having a meeting, but we may have spent huge amount of time studying a DEIR, and turning in written comments for that. Sometimes it's a matter of researching a law that, like SB 9, or, or the RV park that was proposed to go in, where we may be spending a lot of time behind the scenes, and whether or not we have a, a meeting that particular month, doesn't mean that we didn't do anything. And sometimes maybe we don't do something in one particular month, but we may have a whole slew of things that we have done, like when a housing element was coming in.
Oh, yeah.
Those that served on, on committees for the general plan spent huge amounts of time. And so if you could just add some little phrase that makes it clear that it's not just a matter of we show up at a meeting once a month. And I bring this up because there was some discussion or criticism last month, I think, when people thought, well, if they didn't have a meeting, they don't deserve any, they don't even deserve their $50 a month, or $47.17. 46.17. Anyway, so if you could consider adding just a little phrase, so that it's not just that we showed up at a meeting, or it was canceled or something, we have other things that we're responsible to do. Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak on this before I go to Zoom? Go ahead, Pam.
Pam Blake, I think Jean was talking about me last month. Because I did make a notation about, because we talked about payroll, that it was easier to spit out checks every month, and I made a comment about, you know, meetings have not been scheduled, they've been canceled, but I have to take that back. Jean made a very good point there, that just because you don't show, have a meeting, doesn't mean they're not working behind the scenes. I have a question on the dollar amount, because it says 25 to $50 a month. Do you know what dollar amount that we're looking for, for November?
So that, that's not the conversation for tonight?
Okay, that's what I was going to say.
That would be in a future agenda item, that's not agendized tonight for discussion. Tonight, we're looking at amending the ordinance related to the planning commission.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm all for amending the order for the planning commission, because I do think they do good work, and especially Jean, she's done it for years and years and years, so, yes, so this will come back up in November.
So if, if approved tonight, it'll go for the second reading in November, and generally ordinances have a 30-day cooling period.
Sorry, I didn't know this was October, so it's next month.
Oh.
Yeah. And then after that, council then could consider adopting a resolution or agendizing to have that conversation about modifying the compensation after that time.
Okay, I'm going to scratch off all my little notes here. Thank you very much, but I do agree with Jean back here. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam. Is there anybody else in the audience before I go to Zoom? Last call. Okay, it doesn't look like it. So is there anybody on Zoom?
No, but I will make a, a side note on this, given the discussions and some phone calls I've received. The application is, the application for boards and commissions has been placed on the website, and it can be found on the town clerk page, and on the planning commissioner page. So that way, if somebody's looking for it, it's there and available for somebody when, as the time gets closer.
Right. So, so I was just going to clarify, I, I do believe there is an application being done, it's just not put in a packet where all of the, the council could see it. Because I know when I was on the park and open space in 2009, I filled out an application, and it was so-
Exactly. The, the application has already been a process, it's just making sure David brought, brought forward a really good point, that when these people are brought forward to be commissioned at a meeting, the application is, is a really good thing for everyone to be able to see who it is they're talking about.
Thank you, Carol.
I'll make a motion to-
I have one before we do that.
Oh, yeah, I have a thought, too. Go ahead.
So in the, it just, I just thought of this as we, as Pam was talking, but if, in the compensation statement, it no longer states how much we're paying them, so does that just automatically stay $50?
Well, I was, I was going to have a conversation with Wes after this. We'll want to bring a resolution forward for second reading. It could just set it at $50, which is what it is right now, and you could put off for another day to talk about changing it, but we'll want a resolution to accompany the ordinance, so that-
Before this goes into effect, okay.
And, and it can, we can just bring it forward at $50, and you can discuss it.
And then just as a quick question, does anybody have any interest in adding-
I do.
Anything to the statement of the, to Jean's comment?
So getting back to subsection 2.36.060, compensation authority, where in the last part of the sentence, it describes that each member shall receive compensation for attending, participating in planning commission meetings. So my statements on the last meeting were more about this, the scheduling of compensation being on a regular payroll schedule, which is once every two weeks, first and 15th, or silver, something along those lines.
Like every other week, I think.
We're on a 26-pay period cycle for the year, so it's, it's all-
Every other week.
Balanced out that way.
Okay, so it's every two weeks then?
Yeah.
Okay. But, so, but the, to the larger-
Sorry, Danny, clarification, Lori helped me here. Planning commission only gets paid once a month.
Once a month.
On one of those pay cycles, so they get the full amount in the first, first or the second pay period in the month, so it's one time.
Okay.
Right?
Well, that's, that's processing. Okay, good, good for that. But to that point of this last sentence, for attending and participating in planning commission meetings, you know, there is, there is work behind the scenes that a person does. There's also planning. So for instance, if you're on the planning commission, and you know you're on the second Thursday of the month, or the fourth Thursday, which one is it?
Um, it's the fourth.
Fourth Thursday in the month, then-
Fourth Tuesday.
Then, ahead of time, when family engagements are coming up, you, knowing that ahead of time, make your adjustments, and you say, hey, I can't attend that because I have my planning commission meeting that night. That also is something to be considered in this. Now, it's not only the work behind the scenes, but it's your adjusting of your calendar and schedule in preparation for a meeting that may or may not happen. But even if the meeting is canceled, you went ahead and canceled some of your stuff ahead of time, in anticipation of that meeting that got canceled. So I agree that the verbiage that is focused on meetings should be struck.
Could we use activities?
Or just membership of count, of membership of the commission? You get paid once a month for membership of the commission, that way it's not tied to a specific meeting, or a specific activity.
You, you could put a period at the end of resolution, right? So each member of the planning commission of the town shall receive monthly compensation in an amount set by the town council by resolution, period.
I like that.
Yeah.
All right, so that would be scratching the latter part of that sentence. And that clears things up.
Yeah.
Okay. So now-
So I guess I don't need to speak then, because you took care of it.
Oh, I'm sorry to steal your thunder.
It's okay. I was just going to say, as a previous planning commissioner, not as long as Jean by any means, I will agree with her that they work extremely hard, and there was times where I would lose hours of sleep before a planning commission meeting, have to go to work, and have, they have, you know, they work, they have family obligations, things like that, and they still have to be fully prepared. Sometimes they, I remember one meeting when I first started, because Councilmember Cartwright pointed me, I had to read like 90 pages for the housing element. So that's a learning curve in itself. There's things that come across their plate, that they have to figure out what they are, they have to be prepared. And again, as you see in our council meetings, you think that we have a lot of work to do. Well, again, I want to, I just want to reiterate, they're like a judge, so they get hit with things, people come at them and they're upset, they have to be professional, they have to be ready to go, they have to keep a tight, what is the expression, tight lip, they can't, you know? And it's a, it's a very rigorous, hard position. It's a, basically a volunteer position, and I think, like you said, whether, they, there's things that go on behind the scenes, whether they have a meeting or not, they're meeting with, I don't want to say developers, but they're meeting with the staff, there's all kinds of stuff. They're getting briefed by the planning director on things that come up on a weekly or monthly basis. There's a lot that goes into it, and I think honestly, $50 isn't really, I'm just saying, isn't really not enough for all the work that they do. I mean, if you think about in the last two years, there's things that, like the RV park and the housing element, everybody sat on a committee, you might have been a vice chair of a committee, and you had subcommittees as well. So that really is not enough money for all the work that they do, and I just want to thank you guys again for that, and say thank you, Councilmember Cartwright, because that is very eloquent, that, period, they should get a monthly stipend. So, thank you. And I will let Councilmember Nysley do her spiel, because I know she wants to move.
I know, I'm going to try to do this.
Sorry, I just wanted to say that.
I would like to make a motion for the recommended action, and also, but also removing the last part of the sentence of 2.36.060, compensation dash authority.
I second. Thank you. And District Attorney Guyer is on Zoom. Okay, so let's take a, I guess, yeah?
Oh.
And, yeah, no, thank you, I really appreciate that, yeah.
Councilmember Nysley?
Yes.
Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye. All right, so now we will go back. So I just want to put this on record, we have two more, I know they're out of order. We have 11 and 14. So we'll go from 11, and then do 14, since that's going to take the longest. So if DA Guyer would like to, well, you're supposed to introduce him, I apologize.
Either way, however you want. I mean, staff was asked to put this on the, the agenda for discussion. Reading the material looks like Prop 36, amends Prop 47 in various ways, it's outlined in the staff report on there. I think, at this point, I think I'm willing to turn it over to either our District Attorney for Placer County, Morgan Wire, if he has some additional comments he'd like to add on that, or if council has discussion they'd like to have on this item.
I think we should have DA Guyer speak, and then after that, we could come back to the council for any questions, comments, or concerns, but he did plan to, you know, he had a lot of other engagements, and he's made time for us, so I think we should let him speak first.
Good evening, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
All right, good evening, council, thank you, and thank you to Carol for, for all of the efforts to get me on here. I apologize for the, the background noise, but I'm at a, another Prop 36 event. I will be brief, you all have had a long night, and this issue hopefully is relatively clear, but as you all know, Prop 47, 10 years ago, changed the landscape of the, our ability to hold criminals accountable in the state of California. This has been a challenging last 10 years, and Prop 36 is a really momentous opportunity for us to put our state back on the right track. As a result of Prop 47, we have seen rampant theft, we have seen increased homelessness, we have an over 50% increase in the state of California, while nationwide it's gone down. And we've seen a rise in fentanyl deaths throughout our state, throughout our country. And hopefully you are all aware of the efforts we've made here in Placer County to try and hold dealers accountable. Prop 36 has three essential pillars. It reinstates penalties for repeat thieves. It allows us to increase accountability. It has some provisions in there about smashing grabs and for high dollar thefts. The second pillar is fentanyl. It allows some additional penalties for those who deal in large quantities. It helps advise those who are dealing fentanyl to be advised that the consequences could carry murder charges should they sell and kill in the future. And as hopefully you're all aware, we have had the first fentanyl conviction for someone who sold fentanyl and killed their customer in Placer County. There have been four statewide, three of those convictions have been in Placer County. And then the third pillar of Prop 36 relates to really targeting our homelessness crisis. And essentially what it does is creates what we call a treatment mandated felony, which means if you have been convicted three times of possessing hard drugs, it allows for felony prosecution with the goal of getting you into drug treatment. As we all know, those who are suffering from addiction need a push into the treatment. And Prop 47 eliminated our ability to require people to go into treatment. This will allow us to do that if someone successfully completes that treatment program. The charges will be dismissed, the record will be expunged. But with Prop 47, what we saw was a whole lot of people who were suffering from addiction fall off the grid. Oftentimes, the criminal justice system is that last stop to get people into the help that they need so that they don't have to live on the street and don't ultimately succumb to their addiction. And Prop 36 helps restore that accountability and the ability for us to put people into the resources and services that they need. So I would urge the councils to support this. It has been supported by a wide coalition. This is a nonpartisan issue, this is a common sense issue that has wide support. Happy to answer any questions, I've already talked way too long, but that's what you get for having a lawyer come on. So I appreciate your time, and if there are any other questions, happy to answer them. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, DA Guyer. So why don't we open this up to the council real quick for discussion?
I just first wanna say thank you so much, DA Guyer. You are a rock star for putting in this long night and postponing your dinner to speak to our council. We really appreciate you. Also, I am in full support of this. I think, like he said, it is a common sense. If you look in this handout, the mayor of San Francisco, the president and CEO of the California Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, like there's all kinds of different people who already support this. So I do not see any reason why we would not support this and also do a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
I had two quick comments. First is, and I talked to Wes about this earlier, but I don't like having political ads in the packet that we get. If you're gonna give us a yes, we should definitely get a no on 36 also, but I would rather neither of them be in there. Just because it's not, we've already, just with the packet, we've already taken a sign, I feel like. I also, there's, at the very bottom, there's a whereas, I just noticed. It's not even bolded, but it says, whereas it's time for meaningful and tailored reforms to our justice system to ensure the safety of our communities. I feel like every other statement in this resolution is more of a fact, and that is an opinion statement. I feel like, if you all wanna keep it in there, I guess I'm fine with it, but I think that I would, I would like to strike that one from the resolution.
What was that again?
So it says, it's time for meaningful and tailored reforms to our justice system to ensure the safety of our communities. I mean, that's, to me, I feel like that is definitely an opinion statement. And so I would rather, I'd like to stay away from those as much as possible in resolutions.
Okay. Anybody else? Jenny, do you have any thoughts? It's okay if you don't, but I'm just allowing all you to speak. Go ahead.
I, I don't have a problem with striking it out.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with keeping it in.
Okay, so you don't care either way, that's good. You wanna say anything?
Why not? Let's see here. Whereas it's time for meaningful and tailored reforms to our justice system to ensure the safety of our communities. That's, I think it's an acknowledgement of the reality of the times we live in.
Correct.
So I don't have a problem with it at all.
Thank you. So, we wanna open this up to public comment then? Okay, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak on this item? Please come up, oh, okay, so Pam and Jan both want to.
Jan Clark-Cretz, thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about this item. I strongly urge you to support this proposition. It's something that has been sorely needed since the last proposition really affected us. And I have huge respect for DA Guyer and Sheriff Wu and Sheriff Bonner, I know they all support it. And just wanted to let you know, I really strongly urge it, it's so needed in our state. Thank you so much, and in our town.
Yes, thank you, Jan. Pam, do you still wanna get up and speak?
Should be stapled. Oh, since we're out of order, number 11.
Yeah, we're on item 11.
Well, I looked him up and I typed in his name. And I do see him on TV all the time, he's doing, you know, a good job. I'm horrified by these smashing grabs and.
Yep.
No respect to property, breaking windows and not stealing something. And when this was first, whatever, you know, I was against it. So, you know, I'm glad to see it is up there. It's gonna be felonies because they need to be held accountable. My only comment was going to be that I just didn't think an actual proposition should have been on the agenda for a town council meeting. You know, so, but that was my, that was my comment. I kinda agreed with David there. You know, you have a pro and against, and I saw, I was trying to find it in my booklet, who was against it, and it was somebody in Oakland or something like, something like that. But no, this, it makes me sick. And then the fentanyl and stuff like that, kids dying. So I wanna thank him for doing a good job on prosecuting these, you know, people. And I, there's no, they, they just turn around, they get arrested, they get, turn around, and then they break into another business in the store the next day. And so they need to be locked up. And that's how I, you know, feel, so, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody on Zoom? Okay, so I wanna, oh, oh, I'm sorry, sir. I didn't, I didn't know you were getting up when I said that, I apologize.
Ryan Faircloth, citizen resident of Placer County. I'm speaking for myself. And I wanna commend the mayor, Youngblood, on the proposed resolution as written, because there's nothing wrong with saying, and by the way, we all wanna save community. And that's a good statement from the town council, thank you.
Thank you. I just, if there's nobody on Zoom and nobody else wants to speak, I just wanna make a comment as to where this came from. So me being on the Public Safety Committee for CalCities, I will say, it was, I believe, the mayor of Oakland, but I don't wanna quote that. But I will say that it had bipartisan support. Obviously, we're all local municipalities that attend the Public Safety Committee. But I remember when this originally came up, when we were all in LA, and it was one of those things that was unanimous, pretty much, that everybody felt that this is a true issue in every city in California. So while I do understand where you guys were saying that we didn't have for or against, I just wanna mention, there have been propositions in the past, and I won't get into those, that we have actually supported where there wasn't a for or against. And this is kind of a common sense thing that we wanna keep Loomis safe, we wanna keep Placer County safe. And not only that, it also encompasses fentanyl and allowing people to, I'm trying to say this in a dignified manner, not pushing people to go back into treatment. But I guess that was taken away, and it may help with the homelessness, because a lot of the people that are on the streets have nowhere else to go, and they have a true problem, and it's not being addressed. So I think that this is an opportunity for several different things. This proposition is really great because there's more, it's more than just the, you know, the retail theft issue, which I wanna remind everybody, we've had this happen in Loomis. We've had, yes, yes, so the gun shop, Ace Hardware, it's happened, I mean, you think, oh, this isn't gonna happen in Loomis, this has actually happened several times if you think about it. And we don't want it to continue. And I think it's, if you put that aside, that's a proposition, it affects everybody. You go to the mall, I've seen it happen, I was at Macy's one time, and I saw a lady literally go out of the mall with prom dresses. There was at least 10 of them, and they couldn't do anything about it. I mean, it's, it's, I mean, that's costing us taxpayer dollars as well. So what I would say is, I know that it's upsetting to see that I put something, and I just wanna say this, that is pro something without having a negative, but keeping in mind that there was only one mayor when this was brought up at CalCities, at our Public Safety Committee, that was actually against it. So, you know, and we had, we had the, we had pro library measure C, and we've had PCTPA come speak, we didn't have somebody who was against that. So again, this is protecting the town of Loomis, so that's why I mentioned it. So I will open it back up to the council.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I do, I do have one more comment.
Okay.
As a small business owner that have almost 28 years, I have been broken into many times. And several times, I would say many times, luckily not recently. But we do need to give them the tools to be able to address this issue, and I am, I am for this.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Madam, sorry, were you gonna make another comment?
I just, I mean, I am for this. I just wanted to say that, just to clarify, well, I didn't clarify, to justify my stance from before. I mean, I looked at this, I hadn't really done any research on it. I went through the packet and I said, oh, I say yes, why would I not vote for this? That's weird, but then I said, okay, why don't I, I had to go myself and look up what the no was. And there is, it's more than just, there's, there's quite a few people who are against it. And so it's not just that it's, it is bipartisan, I'm actually for it. I think it's important. I just wanna say that it's, it's, in all cases, it's important to look at both sides and make sure that you understand what's happening in both. And I just wouldn't, I, that's why I wanted it here, is because I wanted to make sure that I was getting both angles before I, before I made a decision.
Yeah, understandable. And you know, I will say this, if we have to rewrite it, so it doesn't offend people in the town of Loomis, that it's, yes, on Prop 36, I just wanna say this, we could unofficially say, this is a prop, a resolution that we're putting forward that we wanna protect our community. But it's still the same thing, it still resonates that this happens everywhere in California, it affects everybody. And I'm not trying to push a narrative and get people to feel pressured, and it's not about what you vote for. This is a necessity in our community, in our state, in our county, and in the town of Loomis. But again, it has happened here, so that's why I brought it forth, because I'm thinking about town citizens and our safety. I mean, it may hap, you might be in a place, like a business, and it could happen, and all different kinds of things could happen, the person have a gun, many different things. So it's just, we just wanna protect our community. And I heard Amanda over here wanting to say something, so I'll open it back up to you.
No, I just think that it's perfectly written the way it is. And I, I think in most cases, David, you're correct, I agree with you. In most cases, you should look at both sides, but this.
And I agree too.
What is the alternative to this?
Yeah.
So I really don't see a point of like wasting more paper to put in a no. And I, I am ready to move to pass it as is.
Thank you. And I agree with you as well, I want you to know that. But I just figured in this situation, that the majority of the community would be like, yes, please. But because it is a public safety situation.
I second the motion.
Thank you to you both.
Is the motion acceptable? Okay.
Council member Cortez?
Aye.
Council member Nysley?
Yes.
Council member Cartwright?
Aye.
Council member Ring?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Youngblood?
Aye. Thank you. So now that that's passed in, again, if he's still on Zoom, thank you so much for coming to speak. Is he, okay?
I think we may have.
Thank you very much, I'm still here, thank you very much, signing off. I really appreciate all your work, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Morgan, Morgan.
I think given the time and the amount of time that it's gonna take to do the, you might wanna make a, make a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay, yes, just to be on the safe side, how long do you think, an hour? Half an hour?
No, I, I bet that Chrissy can get done under seven minutes.
Okay, but just to be on the safe side.
Can we just extend it to 9:30 just to make it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, let's make it interesting.
Not that we have to, we, let's.
Somebody make a motion to extend this to 9:30 hypothetically, and if it's done in seven minutes, we can go home. How about that?
I make a motion to extend it to 9:30.
Okay, did I say 7:30?
I second.
I'm sorry. Hawaii time, 7:30.
Council member Nysley?
Yes.
Council member Cortez?
Aye.
Council member Cartwright?
Aye.
Council member Ring?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye, thank you very much, you guys. And we'll move on to item 14, which is actually town business. So I will let our town manager introduce our planning director.
Well, Madam Mayor, I appreciate the opportunity, but this really is Chrissy's item to present tonight. This is the final piece of adopting the zoning ordinance amendments associated with the general plan updates that we've done. And Chrissy's done a great job of putting together a presentation with council for clarity.
Thank you. That's what I meant for, yes. Thank you, Christie.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Youngblood and members of town council. I'll go over a little background before I get into the PowerPoint. Essentially, the current general plan, housing element, was adopted by the town council on August 17, 2021. And it includes programs that require implementation of zoning ordinance amendments. And that includes an update to the zoning map. And that's in order to comply with our state housing policy and to provide for adequate opportunity to meet the six cycle regional housing needs allocation for the town. So there are five programs that require an amendment to the zoning ordinance. Those are programs 2, 5, 6, 11, and 15, and I'll get into those in just a minute. But before I get into that, I wanna preface this, that to maintain a housing element that the State Department of Housing and Community Development deems compliant, the amendments must be implemented in a timely manner. So that would be within one to two years. And if you do the math, 2021, we've surpassed that. Since the town was updating the entire general plan at that time and including updates to the land use diagram and land use designations that would affect the zoning ordinance, the town didn't yet adopt the zoning ordinance amendments so that the amendments could also capture those general plan changes and maintain consistency between those two documents. You know, strictly speaking, between housing and land use, not the remainder of the general plan. On September 24, 2024, the planning commission recommended that the town council adopt the zoning amendment ordinance through resolution 2403. The town council may also choose to further amend the zoning ordinance with additional modification. However, further modifications delay implementation of the housing element programs that are monitored by the California Housing and Community Development Department. And they issued a letter of concern.
Oh, boy.
On August 14 of 2024, stating that program 11 had not been fully implemented, and they were concerned with that. And they, you know, we've currently exceeded the deadline established in that program to change the zoning ordinance. Further delay can lead to HCD's revocation of findings that the town's housing element is compliant. That means actions can be taken against the town by the state attorney general's office. We can lose state funding eligibility, there's financial penalties that can be applied, loss of local land. loss of local land use authority, and application of builder's remedy, which limits the town's ability to review and condition projects. There will be other zoning ordinance update opportunities in the future where the ordinance will be checked against the entire general plan and all the policies that we've adopted in the update, so we can maintain consistency between those two documents. So now on to the PowerPoint. So again, adopted in August 17th, the housing element, and the general plan was adopted on April 9th of 2024. The housing element includes those programs that I was just mentioning. Those programs require amendments to the zoning map to rezone land to high-density residential, which would be a RH20 zone. And then amendment of the central commercial zone to increase the density from 15 to 20 units per acre, which is also reflected in the general plan. And then text amendments to be up to date with state and federal fair housing laws. The general plan update amended the land use diagram, and the zoning map should be consistent with that diagram. The general plan land use element included land use designation, density, and coverage changes, for example, the central, our downtown area, Town Center Commercial, which is the central commercial zone, updating that density. So we want to make sure we're consistent between those two documents. The proposed zoning ordinance amendments were addressed by the general plan EIR, so no additional SEQA analysis is required. So going over the five housing element programs that require an amendment, Program 2 was to conduct a comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance to ensure compliance with state and federal fair housing laws, and analyze the effectiveness of goals, policies, programs, and codes in furthering the development of housing for all Loomis residents. So doing an overhaul of the zoning ordinance to make sure of compliance. Program 5, the town will remove barriers to housing for special needs groups by amending the zoning ordinance to address the following: employee and farmworker housing, single-room occupancy units, residential care facilities, low-barrier navigation centers, and then defining family, specifically as one or more persons living together in a dwelling unit. So this means including or modifying definitions for those bulleted items you see, and then adding them to the tables of allowed land uses, and then eliminating any discretionary approvals for those uses or barriers to their implementation. Program 6 states to amend the zoning ordinance to address ADUs or accessory dwelling units, the RH zone, height limits, so increasing that to three stories, multifamily parking standards, so reducing them per the requirements under state standards, emergency shelter parking and permitting requirements, density bonus law compliance, and supportive housing, and in that case, allowing supportive housing ministerially. Program 11 states that on the zoning map, identify a seven-acre site within the village, a Hidden Grove property, and 2.2 acres elsewhere in town as RH20, and then increase the density in the town center designation or central commercial zone from 15 to 20 units. And then finally, Program 15 states implement state density bonus requirements and allow a density of 20 units per acre for affordable housing targeted for special needs groups in zones allowing multifamily residential development. As for the zoning map amendments, those are changes for consistency with the land use designation changes made for the general plan update. So the land use change requests that were made by landowners and vetted through the general plan committees, those are included in the zoning map change. And then Program 11 compliance, which is identifying on the zoning map those seven acres within the former village, the Hidden Grove site, to be zoned as RH20. And then again, we had to find at least 2.2 acres of land to be rezoned as RH20, and we identified those properties within the town-owned Heritage Park site. So here you'll see the two maps together. The map on the left is showing the proposed zoning map, and then the map on the right is the land use diagram from the general plan. So you'll see, I mean, if you just, it's hard to read, but if you look at the color patterns, you'll see similar patterns where each of the land uses are matching up so that we don't have a parcel with one type versus another. The only exception to that is the, on the Hidden Grove site, the only change is that RH20 site identification. The rest of it remains as it was previously from the referendum, and because we have a project application in on that particular property. So this is just a list of all the properties that were changed. The first handful are those that were made for the general plan land use diagram. They're changing properties from residential estate to residential agriculture. They just include everything that was vetted through that process. And then as you scroll down, you'll see a number of parcels that are zoned RM5 right now, and they would become RH20. Those are the Heritage Park parcels. And then also, we have the, the seven acre of RH20 for the Hidden Grove site. And then the parcels at the end of that list include parcels that were north of Brace Road that had been tourist commercial that were changed to rural residential per those residents' requests. So going on to the text amendments, I'm just going to briefly discuss what was changed in each chapter of the ordinance. So Chapter 13.24, residential zoning districts, residential incentives were added in relation to state, state law, excuse me. We revised the explanation of the RH20 zone to remove reference to the village and an old housing element that had, that has since been passed. And then on Table 2-2, on the allowed land use list, we had added employee farmworker housing, supportive and transitional housing, and single-room occupancy, and also changed the naming for accessory dwelling units from second units or carriage units to be up to speed with the current naming from the state. Table 2-4, for the RS, RM, and RH district development standards, we changed, we updated the height and coverage limits to be in compliance with what we also have in the general plan for coverage. And the RE district standards and clustered residential development requirements, those were outdated because they referenced things undeveloped areas, they were vacant, recognized as vacant at this, at the time in the zoning ordinance, so it's just updated to show development has occurred since 2003. In Chapter 13.26, the commercial zoning districts, Table 2-6, which was the list of allowed uses, was updated regarding single-room occupancy, supportive and transitional housing, low-barrier navigation center, and special needs housing densities. And then Tables 2-7 and 2-8 included updates in relation to coverage for the commercial districts, setback limits in central commercial winters, commercial districts, and the density in the central commercial district. Those are reflecting the changes we made in the general plan, so we're that we have a consistency going between them. And then also, based on the density changes, making sure that the sites can accept the density that we're proposing, where setbacks might need to be smaller or a height, additional height allocation given. Chapter 13.28, industrial and public zoning districts, Table 2-9, allowed uses was updated to include employee and farmworker housing. Chapter 13.30, general property development and use standards, there was a clarification regarding screening requirements and confirming design review processes if alternative setbacks are proposed. And then in Chapter 13.32, housing incentives, again, clarification for affordable and senior housing projects, and stating that they are also eligible for a density bonus. Chapter 13.36, parking and loading, we added exceptions to off-street parking requirements for qualified housing projects per state law. And Table 3-7, which is the list of parking requirements by land use, was updated to also reflect those state changes. Chapter 13.42, standards for specific land uses, we replaced the standards for second unit, units and carriage units with standards for accessory dwelling units per state law. And then there's also a description of standards for single-room occupancy, residential care facilities for the elderly, which was updated, emergency shelters, multifamily housing, and then residential accessory structures and second stories in relationship to ADUs. Chapter 13.62, permit approval or disapproval, we included mixed-use projects, corrected references to other sections of the ordinance so that they were stating the right section of, of the ordinance, and then adding exception for design review for urban lot splits, which would be the SB 9 law. Chapter 13.80, under definitions, we replaced carriage house and second dwelling unit with accessory dwelling unit, and we defined assisted living facility, employee and farmworker housing, family independent living center, senior apartment, senior housing, single-room occupancy, special needs groups, urban lot splits, and low-barrier navigation center. And we revised those definitions of residential care facility for the elderly and supportive and transitional housing, so that they are up to speed with current laws. And then there were a handful of other small text amendments. So to Section 13.26.080, there was a placeholder added for the central commercial district. We have a description for standards for every other commercial district but that one, and I think we should be looking at that sometime in the future to create those standards so that we have some direction in that zone. 13.3100, on screening, we added clarification that a planning permit application is needed if a waiver is requested, and that design review permit approvals are required prior to building permit applications submitted. Sometimes we will receive a building permit application, it needs work in terms of planning, and so if they are receiving approvals there first instead of with planning, then they have to redesign the project, and they're wasting their money. So we're trying to streamline that so that people are not wasting their money. And then 13.36.080, reduction of parking requirements regarding an allowance for reduced or waived parking standards, text was added regarding the central commercial zone parking for properties along Taylor Road. So there is existing text regarding off-hour and off-site parking downtown, but waiving of parking should also be addressed. And then Section 13.36.090, parking design, there was an error in Table 3-9 for 90-degree parking aisles. It only required a 13-foot width for the aisle, which would only be usable if you're driving a smart car. You wouldn't be able to move, maneuver your car into a 90-degree parking stall. So we corrected that, and then there were just minor grammar, alphabetizing numbering type of updates.
Okay, cool. Well, thank you, Christie. Does the council have any thoughts, questions, concerns? Nothing? Okay. So before we give direction, why don't we open up to public comment? Does anybody in the public want to get up and comment on this? Okay. Is anybody on Zoom? All right. Okay, well, does anybody want to make an adoption, motion to adopt?
I move to adopt.
Okay, a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Oh, hi.
Who was it that seconded?
Jenny.
Okay. Councilmember Cortez?
Aye.
Councilmember Nicely?
Yes.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Aye.
Councilmember Ring?
Yes.
Mayor Youngblood?
Aye. So at this time-
Can I just make one point? This is first reading of the ordinance, so it will be back for second reading and adoption.
So, yes-
And I think also that we've already all talked about this many, many times throughout the general plan update.
I'm sorry, so this has to be adopted, though, right? Because we have to be in compliance with HCD, so-
Yes, but, but tonight's action is actually first reading of the ordinance. You'd have to, because ordinances have to be read twice and acted on twice.
So this will go on the consent agenda for next month, correct? Okay, cool. So then we can move on to the-
One last thing. So is it obvious that we wanted to do all of this, that was the recommendation? Because the other one was to determine that it was exempt from SEQA?
Oh, whoops.
As a matter of clarification, your motion was to move the recommended actions.
Do we also, okay, so we're good? Yeah, we, we thought about both things. Yeah, okay. So now is the fun part. If anybody wants to comment on any committees, also, I want to state that we have three people going to the Cal Cities Annual Conference next week. So do we want to, do any of you have any comments about your committees for last month, or what you'll be doing at Cal Cities?
I will just say, thank you, Jenny, for standing in for me for PCTPA while I went to witness the birth of my granddaughter. Again, I guess I missed a lot of stuff that week, but it was really important for me to get to be with, with my daughter, as she brought in our eighth grandbaby, so. But thank you, Jenny. So I don't really have any because I was gone. But in Long Beach, I will be on the Public Works Communication and Transportation Committee. I sit on that, and so that's what I'll be doing in Long Beach.
Thank you.
I'm, it's the second year I'm on the Community Service Committee for Cal Cities, and I'll be on that committee.
Okay. Do you have any committees that you would like to talk about that you-
No.
-did last month, or anything, nothing? Okay. I, I know we scheduled our next Public Safety Committee meeting, and it'll be November 19th, I think we decided. As far as SP Mud, I heard that they, they haven't announced, but they have moved closer to finding a replacement for the Herb. So I, yeah, that's pretty much all I have for that. And then I just want to thank everybody again for those who came out to the Public Safety Fair, because that was a continuation of all the work that we do. I know at the very beginning, people were wondering, why do we need a Public Safety Committee? But you're seeing all these things that we're actually doing to keep Loomis safe, and it was actually a fun event, that kids loved it, it was very informative to adults. We had the, the, and I'll, I can let Carol talk more about that, but Carol was actually the one that got the child ID. I think this is important to mention because this affects people in Loomis, so.
Well, it was really nice working with Plaster County sheriffs on this, because, you know, when I went to the meetings, when we were kind of coordinating the logistics and everything, and their forensics division actually stepped up to make sure that this happened. You know, I was looking through different committees, and Rockland, and who did they use, and that kind of stuff. And working with Molly, they just said, this is what we want to do, we have people who are trained to do the fingerprints, we can talk to the families about how important this is, help them with the process. So, you know, it's, it's hard to say how fortunate we are with the, with the Sheriff's Division that we have. They really are very, very proactive in our community on so many counts that you don't even think about, that the small things that they step up and make a difference.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to say that it was very well received, and people are already asking, when are we going to do the next one? I had a business say, can we do one next week? I'm like, I think it's a little too soon, but that's wonderful to know that people were already, I know, literally, I'm not exaggerating, that people were very enthused and excited, and I don't know if it was the helicopter flying over Webb Street and scaring everybody who were driving down the road, but people came and they made good use of the opportunity, and I think that we'll be able to do one again next year, and it will make it better. This was our first attempt, and it was pretty amazing, and thank you to Councilmember Cortez for arranging for everybody to come. And they showed up, and it was good. I mean, in terms of the speakers, they didn't end up speaking, but they, they came and they saw the helicopter, and they met with people that were there, and they walked around, and they saw, for one thing, I will say this, how precious Loomis is, and how much we all came together on a Saturday to show that this is an important thing for our community. So with that being said, and I'm referring to Congressman Kylie, DA Geier, Wayne Wu, who is our sheriff, those are just some of the people that came out, but they, they actually got an appreciation and understanding of how precious our town is. And I think it was a very amazing thing for our community, because people look at us, as you said, as we're the naysayer, whatever it is that they say about us, and that, or whatever, but we want to keep our town precious. And I think that, that this was, you know, and we wanted to keep it small. I'm sorry, I should, I need to stop saying precious, but I think it was a good example of how much we all care for this community, and we had dignitaries that came here that saw that, plus we had Plaster County Sheriff that, like she said, day in and day out, they're constantly doing stuff for us. And thank you very much, and I'm going to, at this move, move that we adjourn. Oh, wait, oh, David. Oh, wait. Oh, David. David, please. Yes, thank you. He definitely does.
I was only going to comment that the library is working on a strategic plan, and so that's in the process.
Oh, and they wanted us to say, if you haven't met with them, thank you for mentioning that. I've met with them. I don't know if anybody else has, but it is not a negative thing for the library. It actually helps the library. Thank you very much for mentioning that. Sorry for stepping on your toes on that, but I forgot to mention that, that they want all of us to input how, you know, how positive, and I won't say positive or negative, but it's a positive thing that they're doing this. Okay. Anything else? Okay, no Pioneer stuff? I think we covered it.
How much more time do we have?
Okay, and obviously, I'll be at the Public Safety Committee in Long Beach. So I'm going to adjourn at this time. Thank you for coming, and thank you for putting up with the long items, and have a good night, everybody.